And I'm going to call to order, we're going to do a class salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who remains standing for a moment of silence for all those who come our way? Thank you. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, a standing or adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following manner for on Monday, March 4th, 2024. Advanced written notice that this meeting was submitted to the Daily Record for Publication on Thursday, March 7th, 2024. Is the mic on?
I don't think, they're on now.
There we go.
On Monday, March 4th, 2024, advanced written notice of this meeting was submitted to the Daily Record for Publication on Thursday, March 7th, 2024. On Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, advanced written notice of this meeting was hand delivered for posting to six schools, the Board of Education offices, the municipal building, and the Mount Olive Library. Directly from announcement, we entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Here.
Ms. Orzillo?
Here.
Mrs. Percy's?
Here.
And so how the, um, this meeting will be going, we're going to first do our candidate interviews. We will go one by one through our interviews. We have questions from our committee chairs that will be asked of each individual. Each individual introduce themselves, um, and then we will move on to the next individual. Then we will go into, um, the public will have the opportunity to take up the pen, and then we will go into closed session for consideration of the next act for candidate. And we have Ms. Jackson. We're fixing the mic. Does that matter?
No.
How about me?
I'm good too. I think Lisa's the-
Yeah.
Hello?
We're going to share.
Hi, Ms. Jackson.
No, that's not working.
We're having technical difficulties again. Here we go. We're good? Did you want water? Oh, yes, we can. Hooray. We're good. Hi, Ms. Jackson, welcome. Um, I don't know if you heard us, I consented. We're going to be first allowing you to introduce yourself. Every candidate's going to be given, was it five or 10 minutes? 10 minutes each, and then just our chairs of each committee are going to ask questions of you, and you have plenty of time, um, to answer and respond. And then, um, we'll close it out, and you can give us any closing remarks after that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, and the floor is yours then.
So, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I'm, uh, Dr. Latonya Jackson. I have been here, living in the Bud Lake area for about 13 years, come December.
Hang on, I'm sorry, real quick, I can't hear the mic, and it's not being picked up over here either.
Testing, testing.
Real close.
Can you hear me now? Louder? Okay, that's a little weird, okay. I am Dr. Latonya Jackson. Um, I live in Bud Lake area for the past 13 years, uh, hailing from New York City, so I've been raising my children here. Uh, Shiloh is, how old is Shiloh? Shiloh is 12, and she's here in the middle school. Uh, Christian is 10 at Shan Shore. Um, a little bit about me, I have a background in adult education. Um, I'm degreed as a minister, I'm ordained as a minister. Um, I serve as chief of staff for a nonprofit organization, Public Allies. Um, I also dabble in, and I am actually responsible for board governance, so I manage the board of our organization. I serve on the Boys and Girls Club of Harlem, I am a board member there. Um, I am also on the board at, uh, American Baptist Churches USA. Um, I've served in programmatic strategy and development, um, have a background in conflict resolution. Um, this probably goes a little bit better if you just ask me questions, but, uh, I am also a chaplain in the U.S. Army Reserves. Uh, recently got transferred to 1493rd Medical Detachment Unit in Cary, North Carolina, so I'm there once a month for one weekend out of every month. Serving there as not only a chaplain, but a staff officer to the lieutenant colonel, uh, so the command officer there. I enjoy, um, living in Bud Lake and being, um, a member of this community. I'm very passionate about, um, someone, I'm very passionate about there being diversity, right? Diversity of not necessarily just ethnicity, but diversity of thought, diversity of experiences, bringing a diverse perspective. Um, and so I am proud of the fact that I was able to attend school, not only in New York City, but I was here at Princeton University, at Princeton Theological Seminary, duh, advancing degree in, um, divinity. And, uh, through that experience, had the opportunity to learn about different backgrounds of individuals, gain relationships with individuals who don't necessarily look like me, and don't come from the area that I live at, but understood that there are so many more similarities than there are dissimilarities. Um, I am very excited about not only education and the education and type of curriculum my children are being, um, exposed to, but I'm excited about what we, we as a community, right, can bring to our students in an informal way of education. So, when I hear about things like, um, the entrepreneurship program, I get excited about that, right? Because that's their learning that's happening outside of the classroom. And that's some of what I also do when I look at the Boys and Girls Club that I serve on a board for. Um, I bring different types of opportunities of learning and understanding and cohesiveness so that we can understand that we are a community, that we are not a monolithic community, but we are a community of all types and shapes and sizes, um, that bring all different kind of backgrounds, that feed one another, that embolden one another, and empower one another. So I think that that's my 10 minutes, and I will end there.
So we're going to kick it off with questions. Um, I'm just going to go around the table, so Ms. Fitzgerald will ask the first one.
Hi there. Hi, Lauren. Lauren Fitzgerald. Uh, I am the Finance Committee Chair, and so my question for you from our Finance Committee is, as a board member, how would you work with the superintendent and other board members when there are differing opinions?
The superintendent and board member when there are differing of opinions? So initially, I would ask questions, right? Really sit to try to understand, um, background. I think context is very important to understand the differing of opinions. Um, instead of moving quick to action to make a decision, listening for understanding. Um, listening is an action word, right? It's a verb. And so active listening is very important because it's less about the differing of opinions and more about understanding people's perspectives. Um, and then I believe that once there's a level of understanding, um, around why the, the opinions are so different, um, trying to unearth where are similarities, where can we meet in the middle? Um, and then shape the narrative, right, in a way in which it meets both people at both ends. Um, and then bringing the superintendent in to, to help try to be the defining decision maker because I think the superintendent's voice should carry a level of weight that helps us to make those types of decisions as well. So I think being very open and transparent, um, I think understanding that we're not all here to agree, and we can learn to disagree, um, but what's the, what's the end goal? And if we're all operating and moving towards the same end goal, which is to achieve whatever that may, um, may be, then, and understanding that, um, the student, who's the client, is really why we're here, right? The student and the taxpayers, then we're moving in a way in which that better suits and defines them and supports them.
Thank you.
Ms. Menendez?
Hi.
Hi.
Luisa Melendez, uh, it's nice to have you here.
Thank you.
What do you see as the major issue facing our school district?
What do I see as the major issue facing the school district? I, honestly, I think one of your issues that, um, one of the issues that faces the school district is lack of diversity, right? So when I look at this board, as wonderful as you all, and beautiful as you all, and handsome as you all are, um, I believe that any institution or any body of leadership that represents the total should have mirror representation. And so when you look at your student body, and you see that there are people that are, are ethnicities, or races, or genders that are not represented on the board, um, that are not represented in your classrooms, that are not represent, right? I think that that should call to question, are we really meeting the need? Are we really caring for all of the students? Are we giving them mirror images of themselves to see themselves as teachers? I too can be a superintendent, I too can sit on a board, but if I don't see representation, I don't know that it's a possibility. So I think that's one of the major things that I would say upfront.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Jenna Aquino. I am the Chair of the Personnel Committee.
Yes.
And this is our question from the Personnel Committee. Given the issues that arise, how can the board stay focused on student achievement?
Can you repeat that question?
Given the issues that arise, how can the board stay focused on student achievement?
Well, depending upon the issue that arises, um, and so since you're personnel, I'll just make it up, right? And I'll say if we're dealing with perhaps teachers, right, lack of male representation in the classroom, whatever the case may be. Um, I think one of the ways in which you can stay focused on student achievement is by always remembering that your student is the client, right? I look at it that way, right? Who is your end user? Who is your client? Who, why are we doing this? Why are we here? Why are we in the classroom? Why are we around this board table? And if the goal is to make sure that we're providing a healthy, sustainable, um, safe space for students of all backgrounds, of all, um, varying degrees to come in and learn and have the ability to make it, the, the education palpable for them to learn, um, I think that's how we stay focused on the end game, right? Which are developing, uh, intel- intellectual and wholesome and well-rounded in children. Children who not only come to school to learn, but come to school to develop social skills, come to school to develop relationships, come, come to school because this is also a way in which they get enrichment. And so understanding that, I think that is a great way to keep our eyes on the end game, which is to make sure that they are in a safe space to be able to do so.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lisa Fenton. I am reading on behalf of Curriculum and Technology. And our question is, what can the board do to strengthen its relationship with the community?
So I think the board does a really good job thus far with its relationship with the community. Um, one of the things that if I was to recommend anything would probably be to be a bit more transparent. Um, when you arm people with information, it disarms all of this, all of the distrust, right? So the more information that I have, um, it gives me, it creates a level of trust, it creates a sense of respect, and it also helps me to understand and see that the people that are representing me are actually representing me, my views, my ideas, my concerns, even some of my challenges, right? And so, um, I think transparency is imperative for any board. There are things that we all are clear about that are confidential and just could not be, cannot be shared. But, um, working in or leveraging the technology space, there are so many different ways in which we can do that, right? And you've been, I, I personally love the website. I personally love the newsletters and the things that come out. But, um, just wanting, hoping that the board can think through other avenues because there are a number of ways in which there are touch points that you can make and to, um, infuse the information into the community where it's not overwhelming, but that they are well informed.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, oh, Dr. Jackson, so that's the end of our questions. But are there any other thoughts you'd like to share with us as we wrap up?
Is that really the end of the questions?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We didn't want to, you know, overwhelm everyone with too many questions.
I appreciate that. So I do have a couple of questions, is that okay? Because as you're determining the right fit, I'm determining the right fit as well. I'm always taught that, um, when I walk, when I walk into a space, and so if you could share with me a little bit about what is the right candidate, the right nominee that you're looking for? What are those attributes?
I can mention one thing that I really strive on, agreeing to disagree. Being able to communicate, being able to see other sides of stories, being able to have somebody up here that might change my mind um, so I could get a different perspective. That is very important to me, and communication is key.
Thank you.
That's good. That's it, okay.
Were there anything other thoughts you'd like to share with us while that?
No, there were no other thoughts I'd like to share. I'd like to say just thank you. Thank you for taking the time to do this. Thank you for opening up your doors and opportunity to sit before you, and it was lovely meeting each and every single one of you. Your smiles make this much easier than what I thought. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome to stay in the audience and watch. Hello, Mr. Bowley.
Hello.
So, just to give you a rundown of, um, we're going to give, each candidate has about 10 minutes. Um, so we're going to open the floor up, you'll introduce yourself, give us a little bit of information you'd like to share with us, your background, and then the chairs of each of our committees, um, will then ask you some questions, and then we'll give you the floor back to, you know, ask us any questions or, you know, give us any final thoughts.
Okay, sounds good. So my name's John Bowley. I live at 25 Sherman Place in Flanders. Uh, I have some board experience from back when I was in Secaucus, about six years worth. Um, I think that you guys, this board's event, our district, is absolutely fantastic. I love it. And I just want to try to be part of moving forward to the future and seeing what we can do to make it even better.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Hi there. We're just making sure we've got a little technical difficulty over here. Um, my name is Lauren Fitzgerald. I'm the head of the Finance Committee. Um, and so, uh, the question from the Finance Committee that we've put together is, as a board member, how would you work with the superintendent and other board members when there are differing opinions?
I believe from past experience that the board, the superintendent, the business administrator, everybody has to work together to get to a final goal. If there's infighting or, um, we have to work it out between ourselves to make everything move more efficiently. Um, I think by talking it out, everybody gives their opinions, and to see how they want to actually move everything forward, I honestly believe that it has to be open, which I think it will be, and- it will be, and you just have to work together. It has to be conversation with everybody. If there's a question, even the smallest question, ask it and get an answer. And you have to get an answer this way, that's the only way you're going to move more forward, more efficiently and responsibly.
Thank you.
Hi. Luisa Melendez, uh, from the Policy Committee. Our question is, what do you see as the major issue facing our school district?
Well, right now, I believe the major, um, question in the district, and I believe it's any district, is budgets. I think we have to be fiscally responsible, use our resources to the best of our ability to get the most out of whatever money we have without burdening the taxpayer too much, because I believe you have to be responsible. And I can't reiterate that enough. It has to be fiscally responsible. You can't just go and say, we want to do this unless you have a really good reason for it. And I think any way you move forward has to be with that thought in mind.
Hi, Jenna Quino. I'm the Chair of the Personnel Committee. So this question is on behalf of that committee. Given the issues that arise, how can the board stay focused on student achievement?
Well, there's always going to be issues that arise. I mean, it's a very large school district, a, a really crossflow of people, of everybody. You have to stay focused, and like I said, communication is the best way. I mean, if there are issues with anything that comes up in personnel, it has to be addressed. It cannot be put aside, has to be addressed appropriately and within short time limits, I believe, because you can't let anything lay and sit, because what happens with that is, it just gets worse and worse, and it just spirals out of control. I think with any personnel, with any issues in the district, has to be dealt with promptly and efficiently.
Hello.
Hi.
I am Lisa Fenton. I am the Chair of C and T, and our question is, what can the board do to strengthen its relationship with the community?
I love that question. And you've already actually started doing that, because I've joined the Mount Olive Citizens Advisory Committee. It has to be the best committee that I've ever seen in any district. It's new. I don't want to pat anybody on the back, but James Kariff, he did a great job putting this, this together. We have our third meeting tomorrow. The first two have been unbelievably interesting and fantastic with a lot of information, and I think it's, it's huge. I think more people have to get involved with it. I know he only has a small classroom for it, but, um, we talked about, I can't believe how many people pass school buses. That was the first time. It's like, it's like 144 a month, he was saying. It's crazy. I mean, I didn't, never would even think of that. I wouldn't think that would be even a close number. I, maybe for the year, maybe, not a month. And then last week we did HIB, which was outrageously good. It was amazing. You guys do an excellent job with that. And I think doing that committee is a great step in keeping everything open and honest with people. I mean, people have the opportunity to, to join up for it, and I think they really should. It's been a great experience, and thank you very much for that. Right?
Mr. Bowley, do you have any questions for the board?
I really don't have any questions. I mean, I, I'd love to see, um, the board as a whole, I mean, as a whole, just use all our district resources as efficiently and responsibly as it can be done with the ultimate goal being the students, families, and even employees, the personnel, and just have their best interests at heart. And, I mean, just be common sense. I, I don't know how to put it. Common sense goes a long way in this world. It's not that common anymore, but it, it would go a long way, and I really appreciate it, and I really think that this board can, can really achieve a lot of good.
Thank you. Any other final thoughts?
No, I'm good.
Oh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome to stay.
Okay.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Capone.
Lisa.
I know you were in the other room, so I'll just a little rundown. Um, each candidate has about 10 minutes to, you know, ask question, um, answer questions, ask questions, and the format will be, we're going to open the floor up to yourself. You can introduce yourself, give us a little bit of, um, your background, and then we're going to, uh, just each Chair of the committees will each ask a question of yourself, then we'll turn it back over to you to either ask us any questions and/or to wrap up and give us, you know, your closing thoughts. So the floor is yours, Mr. Capone.
Okay. I, I've been a superintendent of schools for eight years. I've sat on a school board for three years. I, I'm here tonight because I am concerned about the direction that our district is going, specifically about, uh, the, the fiscal circumstances that, you know, we, we continue to see. I, I started becoming concerned about the finances with the referendum in the fall, with the inability to answer questions, um, and I continue to be concerned about where we are fiscally based on the fact that at the end of last year, you had $8.8 million that was unspent, raised taxes between the state and the local portion, another 10 million. You're getting 5 million more this year, and yet your recommendation from the superintendent is to raise taxes even further, when that's $23 million. And I'm curious as to how long the board has had this information to be looking at this budget that I'm assuming you're passing tonight, and whether you're aware of the statistics that I just provided, um, and, and how this is going to be addressed. And I, I would continue on of saying, you know, the point was made in the fall of, with the referendum, saying that if it's not going to be paid with, by the state through this referendum, if you don't vote yes, that we're going to pay it 100%. And now on the board agenda tonight, you have an item to be paid 100% locally, right? That's, that's what the decision is, that's the recommendation from your superintendent to pay it 100% locally, instead of going back out to referendum to get the state to pay their fair share. Uh, so that's concerning to me from where we are fiscally, all the way across the board. I have, since I've been coming to board meetings, repeatedly addressed ethics, um, the lack thereof, of some of the things that we've seen. And again, I, I continue to come out, and I haven't gone and said, you know, here's, here's all of the things that are occurring, uh, but it's, it's continuously concerning that, um, there's the, the lack of accountability, and, and that's what your responsibility is, is making sure there's accountability within this district. Transparency is a concern, um, as far as making sure that we're providing accurate information, and at the end of the day, all of your decisions should be addressing the needs of students. And if that's done, a lot of the other answers should come pretty easily. And so that's why, uh, I, I decided to put my name in and to come out to participate tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. I'm going to start over here with Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Yes. Speaking my language, Lauren Fitzgerald, Chair of the Finance Committee. Uh, I agree with a lot of the things you said. We actually have a great presentation coming up tonight that will talk about a lot of the numbers you just shared, um, and you're going to enjoy it. It's great, it's very enlightening, Nicole's going to be great, you're going to love it. But for right now, uh, my question for you from the Finance Committee is, how would you as a board member work with the superintendent and other board members when there are differing opinions?
I think that the board should be operating on a zero-based budget. That, that's how you should be creating the budget, and you shouldn't be getting information in March, you should be creating the budget starting in January. And if you create a zero-based budget, then, and, and personally, I would recommend that being a committee of the whole, so that everybody's able to have a conversation, understand how a budget works, okay? Because again, the way that New Jersey's set up, right? You're not into year three before you're actually taking the school board's classes on the, the finance aspects and understanding all of those things. That's when your training occurs. And yet you're making decisions in years one and two without that, that training. So I, I think that if you do zero-based budgeting, you put yourself in a position to, number one, understand the ins and outs of how the budget operates, how it's built, and the things that are going into, again, that can be focused on, on, on student learning.
Thank you.
Hi. Luisa Melendez, uh, Policy Committee. What do you see as the major issue facing our school district?
Uh, I would say the, uh, behaviors that lead to lawsuits, okay? That's, I think, what our biggest concern is at this point. You, you have policies and laws by which it is that you're supposed to be operating, uh, that your administrators are supposed to be operating, and, uh, every time you have a lawsuit, whether you win or lose, okay, you're paying money that's going to take money out of the classrooms, away from teachers, away from students. So, uh, addressing the behaviors, again, accountability, I think is, is the key aspect. That, that's what you should be focused on primarily.
Hi, Jenna Quino. I'm Chair of Personnel. Given the issues that arise, how can the board stay focused on student achievement?
Well, I, again, if this is coming from the Personnel Committee, um, if we're looking at the Personnel answer there is that we're hiring the best candidate. That's how you're going to raise student achievement through the Personnel Department. You're not hiring somebody's daughter, you're not hiring somebody's son-in-law, you're not hiring somebody's friend, you're hiring the best candidate that's going to meet the needs of students, okay? And if you do that, because you'll build the strongest staff that will lead to higher student achievement within the district.
Hi. Lisa Fenton. I am Chair of C, Curriculum and Technology. My question is, what can the board do to strengthen its relationship with the community?
I would say transparency. First and foremost, there, there are too many things that I think that happen that go without explanation that could be explained. Or there are comments made, uh, that are, you know, that carrying the company line. Um, and, and that, I think, discredits people when you're just going to carry the company line, like at your first board meeting saying, we follow all of the school district policies and state laws, okay? That's not a good look, okay, at the very first meeting, to say something like that when there's plenty of evidence to the contrary.
Well, that's the end of our questions, Mr. Capone. I'm going to open the floor up for yourself, if you have any questions of the board, or if there are any final closing thoughts you'd like to share with the board.
How long have you had the school budget that's going to be passed tonight? When was that presented to the committee and the full board?
We, we can't answer questions like for the board. You have to stay for comments afterwards, if you don't mind.
So the questions you're looking for...
Any questions that you have of our, of the board? Tonight's presentation will be on the preliminary budget, uh, that, that all.
I, I would rather just make a closing statement about, uh, again, I, I, I truly hope that the decisions that we're making moving forward are focused on being transparent with the community, honest, having integrity, okay? These are the things, you know, having answers to things that, you know, you should, you should be able to provide, um, that's, that's one of the major problems. And, and, you know, I, I can tell you, as I said, you know, working in education and being in the position that I've been in, okay, there are things that are said and done that are mind-boggling to me. And I, I sat here for almost a year, okay? And I, I, I've told people, I, I have been motivated, uh, by comments that have been made at that board table, okay? By, by people talking about, whether it's the Good Old Boys Club, the cabal, okay? Making comments about, you know, using your position for privilege. Having somebody come forward who works in the district, okay, plugging for board members, right? Like, that, that's, that, nothing says, you know, we're in cahoots more than saying, I'm going to come forward and I'm going to push this board member because that benefits me. Where your job as board members is supposed to be, you're making decisions on behalf of the students, that's who we're supposed to be here for. And every decision, like I said, whether it's the budget, whether it's your policy, whether it's accountability, all of those things being tied back to what's in the best interest of our students, would be a breath of fresh air, and, and I think get a lot of buy-in from the community.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. And you're welcome to stay for the remaining candidates.
Hello.
Hi. Mr. Gallagher.
How you doing tonight?
Good. So, I'm just going to give you a little bit of a rundown of, uh, tonight's, um, format. Each candidate has about 10 minutes to speak. We're going to open the floor up to yourself. You can introduce yourself and your background and, you know, why you're running, why, uh, you'd like to potentially be on the board. And then the four Chairs of our committees are each going to ask some questions, and then we're going to turn it back over to yourself to either ask us any questions that we're able to answer for you. And, um, in addition then, you can give us any final closing thoughts. You have 10 minutes, and the floor is yours, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you. Uh, so Brian Gallagher, uh, I know some of you probably, you know, have seen me a couple months ago. I was able to sit down and talk to the board as well back then, so I appreciate being able to do it again, and I thank the board for its time. So I'll try to not repeat everything from last time. I've been here seven or eight years in town, my wife and I, uh, with three kids in all three schools, at the high school, uh, middle school, and elementary school. Congratulations to my high school daughter, she got her license today, so she'll be embarrassed that I'm talking about her. You know, as I said before, thank you, uh, my career for the most part has been kind of transportation and education kind of based or hybrid. I had a driving school with my father, uh, for about 17, 18 years, uh, which was amazing. After that, we went into, we stuck in transportation, currently running, um, out of district transportation for students. Um, I mentioned that before, most people maybe are aware of what it is. It's, you know, busing for students that go to schools outside of their home resident district. It's small, it's just me and him in two vans, it's not a big company or anything like that, but we enjoy doing it, uh, kind of playing our little part for, you know, students, kind of getting them started on their day at school. Two things more recently for me that I really enjoy, a few, I, for a few years now, I've been coaching the recreational track and cross-country program at Olive Junior Track. Uh, they're having their meeting right now, so I am missing it, so I'm going to hold that against you guys, because I like seeing the kids in the spring. And it's all volunteer coaches. Uh, it's been an amazing way for me over the past couple years to meet so many great people and students. Out of that, working with the young athletes, we've also made our own little running club, which has kind of opened me up to a lot of people in town, talking about our kids and the schools and the district. Uh, I've also recently gotten into substituting, uh, getting my substitute cert, and I had done that for a while, starting earlier towards the beginning of the year, uh, and luckily for me, that turned into a full-time position. I was able to, uh, apply for and accept at a neighboring school district, uh, which has been amazing to kind of be in the schools as well and, uh, kind of have that point of view of how they function. I know I've kind of been at a lot of board meetings and you guys have heard me talk, so, I don't know, maybe I'm trying to help out, you know, gain some perspective, that's just mine. So that's basically a, a quick rundown of me, and I don't know how long it's been, so I didn't type this out this time, so I didn't, you know, so I don't know where I'm at.
Well, let's start with Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Sure.
Hi there, Lauren Fitzgerald, Chair of the Finance Committee. Um, our question is, as a board member, how would you work with the superintendent and other board members when there are differing opinions?
Sure. I mean, you know, I've, you know, I've, I've been married for 18 years, so that's a great start, obviously.
Excellent place to start.
You know, I, you know, I'm obviously very outspoken, I'm not going to try to hide behind that, you know, I come to board meetings and talk, uh, you know, but I'm also willing to accept if I miss a point of view or if I need to kind of understand an expert opinion. I am a huge proponent of public education and the kind of training and career path that educators and superintendents all take to get to where they're at. So, you know, being a board member is being a voice of the public, um, it doesn't mean you're an expert. The experts are the people that are here every day, working with the students, hiring the staff. of having a new appreciation for understanding something, you know, the right way or a better way.
Thank you. Luisa Melendez, Chair of the Policy Committee. And our question for you is, what do you see as the major issue facing our school district?
Yeah, that's a great question. I always like, you know, talking to a lot of the people I mentioned in my opening statements, friends and people I've met about the school district, because we have students all of similar age and we all have the same concerns for the students. I have spoken at a past board meeting, and it was also during the interview process last time, that I really believe the middle school and the social and educational issues and struggles, I guess I would say, is kind of, I think, the real issue at hand. I think that, you know, the HIBs, the bullying, the stress level on academics, you know, the high school has set a really high bar for students coming into it, and I don't think that seventh and eighth graders are being supported, you know, to get their way to the high school. And I don't think that fourth and fifth graders from the elementary school are being supported socially to enter the middle school. And I think it all kind of crashes right there. I've kind of called it a pressure cooker. And I think there's a lot of really great ideas. I brought up a great idea at a previous board meeting about implementing a tag-type system at the middle school. I think that alleviates a lot of the stress for younger students looking to find their place at the middle school and the older students looking for the time. So, you know, I really do see that as the largest issue. I think the largest issue, there's a ton of issues, but I really want to be focused on an educational issue and a student-based issue. So I really do believe that that is it.
Hi, Jenna Aquino, Chair of the Personnel Committee. Given the issues that arise, how can the board stay focused on student achievement?
You know, there's obviously a ton of achievement. One of the things I like about coming to board meetings is seeing, you know, they've had a couple months ago, they talked about the AP results and students that achieve really high on the AP. It's amazing to see some of my daughter's friends that, you know, I don't know what everybody does in school, but then I see somebody that I know taking four or five AP classes and, you know, the achievement levels, you know, are so high there, so... Sorry, I just drew a blank, I actually forgot the question, so I'm going to have you reread it.
You read it again?
Yeah, I'm allowed one tangent, right? Because I don't have anything prepared.
That's all right, you're happy to.
Yeah.
Given the issues that arise, how can the board stay focused on student achievement?
Ah, that's pretty funny that I lost focus on a question about focus. You know, most of the people here, you know, not that I know any of you really personally, are parents, you've talked about your own children. I think when you're a board member, you're asked to do a lot. You guys are kind of controlling and overseeing the entire district, but I think there is a place in everybody's heart and minds, yourselves included, where you're thinking about the students and you're thinking about your child, right? That's, one of the big questions is always, you need to think about what's best for your child. And I know that, you know, hearing a lot of you talk about who you are and your families, you know, it's in there for everybody. And I think that, you know, the divisiveness between the board and public has obviously created a kind of a large cloud over everybody, seeing its way forward, making sure that we're thinking about the students. You know, I'm going to be perfectly honest right now, and maybe this is not a good idea, but, you know, last time I spoke, it was a divisiveness between the board and the public, and more recently, it seems to be divisiveness within the board. And those things were stated by board members. Those weren't stated by us. We see it. But the fact that board members are now saying it out loud too, just shows how much of an issue it really is. But, you know, I think that, like I said, I talk to people in public that I disagree with. I talk to people I'm friends with, I disagree with. I've talked to people that, not that I'm not friends with them, but we have opposing views. And, you know, it's just important to understand, you know, the reasons that we're all doing this, not to be overshadowed by, you know, some of the things that are said online or even in person, you know, hearsay, telephone tag, you know, all of that stuff. I've said it before, and I know I've probably gone about it the wrong way here, if anybody had a question for me, talk to me. You know, like, people know where I live, not that, you know, people need to show up or whatever, but, you know, like I said, I know I've done that very untactfully in the past, maybe wrongly getting my point across, but like, I'm open for business, and I think everybody else should be too. We're all here for the kids. And I think that, you know, just understanding that, we're still all have to be on the same page, is a good way to move forward with that.
Hi, Lisa Fenton, Chair of C and T, and my question from them is, what can the board do to strengthen its relationship with the community?
With the community? You know, I was, I had the pleasure of being part of the bond referendum committee, which I thought I was very supportive of. You know, I think at some of the meetings, I kind of, you know, did bring up points that I thought were opposing to maybe seem like the agenda of the referendum committee, but I was trying to make the point that, like, you know, when the school district meets with people in the school setting, when you ask people to come to some of the meetings, like, you're not trying to convince us, you're trying to convince, you're always trying to kind of speak to the whole entire town. And I think sometimes there's a little bit of a disconnect on understanding that, you know, there's a bunch of people in the town that have students that aren't in the schools anymore. There's a bunch of people that, my favorite type of people in town that I love meeting are the people that are young, new families that have the kids coming in. I think that you need to, I think the most important thing for the board right now, to move forward for the next five or 10 years, is to really get a hold of the families coming in that are young, and I see them in my neighborhood all the time, every year moving in, they want the houses, they want to be here, and, you know, kind of get them more involved. You know, I think that the divisiveness and the, between the board and the public is born from non-involvement, and it's not that anybody is trying to not have people be involved, but I think the board, I know you guys do a lot, committees, meetings, it really is, but there just has to be a little bit of a step to try to be proactive in just doing something different than just having, I'm not trying to make fun of it, you know, breakfast with a board member, sorry, Jen. You know, it's great, I go to them, but, you know, sometimes you see, there's not a lot of people there. You know, I know they have the new kind of startup for having community members come out and kind of understand more about the district and maybe talk about what we need to do moving forward for the schools after the referendum vote and everything. You know, it's just, you know, when I'm out there, you know, like I said, with, you know, our little running club, we spend, you know, two hours on Columbia Trail together, so it's like, you need to talk about something, so it's boring to talk about schools, but, you know, just talk to people. You know, I have two friends of mine in my neighborhood that are young and have young kids, am I coming up on 10 minutes? Did I get the look there or no? Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you were about to cut the mic on me, sorry. I have two good friends of mine that I've met recently that moved in my neighborhood that have young kids that are barely in the school system yet. And, you know, I'm kind of almost begging them at this point to come to board meetings, you know, because I want them to understand the things that I'm understanding now that I wish I knew earlier. You know, I talk to people that don't have kids in the high school yet and they have elementary, middle school kids, and they don't know what tag is, the whole thing I was mentioning about tag. They have no clue. And then explain what it is and what it's done to help my daughter, and they love it, but they don't know anything about it. So it's not just going and talking to the parents of elementary school about what elementary school is and then saying, "Hey, look how great the high school is." You know, try to help them go through the experience of their students going through all levels of school and what's going to put them on the right path depending on the type of student they are. I have three kids and they're all different, so, and you're talking about thousands of kids, you know, so getting more information from the public and being proactive, I think, really. You know, whether it's having a committee, you know, I know you have the PTAs and you have this and that, I don't know. I mean, you know, do more of that, you know, pushing, pushing these people to come out, so.
So now we're going to turn it over to you, Jen, if you have any questions of the board, and then you're welcome to also, you know, wrap up and any final thoughts for the board.
I just thank the board for their time. You know, I do want to say one little personal thing, because I was talking about it earlier, and I know that you have the wrestling club, team coming here later. Being from track and cross-country, I was at the Winter Banquet the other day, I know you guys like to talk about this in your closing comments, so I'm going to say it because the microphone's still open. We had, you know, the Mount Olive Junior Track Club is an amazing club of volunteers, and they have put together a program that is growing so rapidly, you know, that we had, you know, athletes that we've worked with over the past couple of years at the middle school at a recreational level, that during winter track just ran in Nationals for the high school as freshmen last week. So I want to say congratulations to them, you know, moving forward for all the sports, you know, which is a great part of Mount Olive as well. My student, my children take part in the sports as well. And then I'm going to save you the rest of the time, because I know you guys are probably tired here from here every week, every month. So, thank you.
So we will share with you, though, normally we have winter sports honored all together. Wrestling happens to have their banquet during the same time as the next meeting. Track and field, indoor will be here.
I know it's coming up, it's just, you know, the track program has meant so much to me in this town, meeting specifically recreational programs, our kids from this town, all students, it's not club, it's not travel, it's not from all over the place, and I love it so much, so, yeah, I just wanted to get that out.
Yep. And if you stay, we have a full night, we have...
I'll be here all night. Either way.
We have, just for everybody, we have the Diversity Equity Inclusion Club coming up, Council, and then we also have wrestling honors, we have the preliminary budget, and we also have, our NJASBA rep is going to go over our superintendent evaluation. I hope there's coffee on tap.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not used to seeing you on that side, Mr. Chilachi. Well, you know how this goes. We've given each candidate 10 minutes. You know, I'll open the floor to yourself to introduce yourself, and then just the four chairs of the committees will each ask you a question, and then we'll turn it back over to you to close it out.
If you don't mind, since everybody does know me, if I could just have a few minutes at the end of your questions, because I have three items I'd like to discuss with you.
All right, going to kick it off. All right.
Lauren Fitzgerald, Head of Finance Committee. Our question for you is, as a board member, how would you work with the superintendent and other board members when there are differing opinions?
Well, the stock answer on that is, you always go through the president of the board. That's how you build a collaboration of the board and the superintendent, because the board is not supposed to micromanage the district. The board is supposed to set the goals and aims in the direction of the board. And if you decide to go out on your own, which you should never do, the spokesman for the board is the president. You certainly should have your ideas and opinions, and they should be respected, but that's the best way to work with the superintendent. You'll get more accomplished, because the one word I'd like to give you is unity, and that's where you're going to have a strong board.
Thank you.
Hi, Luisa Melendez, Chair of the Policy Committee. Our question for you is, what do you see as the major issue facing our school district?
There's no doubt in my mind that by the end of this year, we have to go back out for a referendum for space. We will be trying to do a lot of the things that were in the original referendum over a period of time, but there is no way that we're going to be able to come up with $20 million off the bat to put two additions on our two elementary schools and the addition on this middle school. So, and we will be out of space. And don't forget, even when, if, and when and if you pass the referendum, it'll be two years before the kids can even get in that school, and we will be out of space at that time. So that's what I think is the most important issue right now.
Hi, nice to meet you. I'm Jenna Aquino, Chair of Personnel Committee. Given the issues that arise, how can the board stay focused on student achievement?
Well, the board stays focused on student achievement by hiring the good people who are going to work for us. I mean, you have, we have some terrific staff here, and we have to rely on that staff. And they come to your personnel meetings and they give you the information you need, and you ask the questions, you also bring it back to the rest of the board. But that's, that's how we're going to accomplish a lot of things. We have to put our trust and faith in our administration. We've hired them, we think they're doing a great job. I do, I think they're doing a great job, and that's, that's how you're going to get a lot of things accomplished. You can't do, you can't do it on your own. Everybody will have an idea, and that's good to bring those ideas forward, but you have to work with the administration.
Okay, my turn. I'm asking for Curriculum and Technology. What can the board do to strengthen its relationship with the community?
You have to remember that the community has elected you officials. They put their trust in you to represent them, and all I ask from you is to listen to them, to be open with them, and to be honest with them, and you will have a great relationship with your community.
Lawrence, yours, Mr. Chilachi, and you can close it out, then. Any questions you have of us? Anything else you wanted to share with the board?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The rest of the time is for you. You can either ask the board some questions, or you said you had some comments you wanted to share.
Yeah, no, I have, I have three things that I think are important for the board to, you know, okay? The first one is, you had on the agenda, and you've tabled it, the four-minute limit for people to speak. We ask our community members to come and talk to us, and if you just look at the last tape, you will see that maybe one person was able to stay under four minutes, the rest were not, including our liaison students. So to cut them off in mid-sentence is not only demeaning, it's insulting. The president of the board has control of the meeting. If a person starts to become abusive, or demagogues, or rambles on, you have, all you have to do is say, "Thank you for your time, your time has expired." So I would take that four-minute rule and throw it in the trash. The second thing that I would like to speak about, and that I did at the last meeting, is the five-four vote. The five-four vote signifies a couple things. It signifies a majority power, and that majority power can vacillate depending on who's on the board at the time. So I don't really like the five-four vote for that reason, but the most important reason for me is that it is a vote of non-conviction. A five-four vote is a vote of non-conviction. And if you think you're going to have one, you should table it, go back into deep discussion, and try to iron that out. The last thing I would like to say is to this board, is when you go in and you deliberate, you should get back out. Now, this board, this interviewing process has been advertised, it's been put on the agenda, it's an action item. It should be treated as an action item. When you come out to vote, it should be a roll-call vote on who you vote for. The last two times, we didn't do that, when we picked you and we picked someone else, but when Mr. Robinson was put on this board, it was a roll-call vote. When I was put on this board, it was a roll-call vote. When Mrs. Aquino was put on this board, there was a roll-call vote, and she got a seven-to-one vote. I voted for someone else. And the reason why I voted for someone else before I even knew Mrs. Aquino was that we had three months to go on that term, and I wanted somebody on that board who had already been on the board, who could get up to speed real quick. And I explained that to Mrs. Aquino, but I promised that person, and I'm true to my word, I will not break my word. The last thing I want to tell you is this, and I've always stated this every year I've been on the board. This is the way I envision a board member. A board member should take care of the education and welfare students, it should be very prudent with the expenditure of taxpayers' money, and it should have a fair and equitable hire of employees in a safe environment. And if you do those three things, you will continue to have a great, great board. Last thing I want to say is, I'm very happy with the people who came out tonight to apply for this. It shows interest, which is what we need, and I congratulate all of them, and whoever you pick, I think you're going to, you're going to do... whoever you pick, I think you're going to do very well, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strzachey.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're actually going to open the floor up to any public comments as it's related to the candidate. Do we have any public comments? No? I did want to acknowledge, we did receive an email from Mrs. Fiamora in support of Mr. Strzachey, I just simply wanted to share that with the community. Anyone else who would like to comment? So the board is going to... Mr. Stansberry, did you... Nope, you're taking a seat, we thought you were going to come to the mic. So at this time, we're going to convene into closed session to discuss amongst ourselves, and then we'll come back out, and actually, Mr. Strzachey, I'm going to have our attorney review the policy to make sure we follow the rules, you're right, you're right? Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
May.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are in closed session.
Hello, testing.
Now it's on.
There we go. All right, we have mics. We are back in session, everyone. All right, do we have a roll call?
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Kara?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Melendez?
Here.
O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
And do we have a motion for appointment of a board member?
I do. I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Tony Strelachi as member of the Mount Olive Township Board of Education effective immediately. Where was he? Through the 2025 reorganization meeting.
And I will second that. Can we have a vote on the motion?
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Congratulations.
I would like to say to the other candidates, though, please, one, continue coming to the board meetings. Please share your thoughts with us. And please also consider, you know, the future for the board as well. You all made amazing, you know, points. You brought amazing value to this district. And we would like you to continue that. Even when we agreed to disagree, you have, you know, each come from a different walk of life. You come from a different perspective. And that is, you know, what we all require and need. And that's what makes our community, the differences that come together. And with that, we'd like to move to the administration of the oath of office for Mr. Strelachi.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Anthony Strelachi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Say it one more time.
And to the governments established in the United States.
Governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I.
I, Anthony Strelachi.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
Possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a board of education.
For the office of member of a board of education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to 19:?
4-1.
4-1.
Nor disqualified.
Nor disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Listed in NJSA, go ahead.
In NJSA.
NJSA.
18A.
18A.
:12-1.
:12.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Mr. Strelachi, please take your seat. Okay. So we are actually going to try to move quickly into our presentation. So we'll just go right on to approval of the board minutes 3.1 and 3.2. We have a motion. Ms. Menendez.
I present a motion to approve approval of the minutes 3.1 and 3.2.
Second.
Can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neal? Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi? Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
And do we have any communications or petitions to the board?
No.
No? And with that, we're going to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Banjia, for our students' presentation.
So we have a jam-packed evening. And so first of all, before we begin, I'd just like to remind everyone that we have our kickoff strategic planning meeting this coming Tuesday at the middle school. You received an email a couple of weeks ago about to sign up to attend the meeting. If not, we're sending out a reminder. It's going to be your first opportunity as a community to get involved. We certainly hope to see you out next Tuesday at 6:30 here at the middle school. So without further ado, I'd like to invite Mr. Kevin Stansberry up. He has some great student groups here to celebrate all their wonderful accomplishments. Thank you, Mr. Stansberry.
Thank you, Dr. Banjia. Good evening, Board of Education members, members of the community. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce our first presentation this evening. Our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Council comprised of students from a very diverse population at Mount Olive High School. And I'd like to introduce their advisors because they'd like to share with you the work that they've done since the beginning of the year. And it's been absolutely fantastic. They presented to Dr. Banjia and I probably around November. And then they presented to our faculty at the last faculty meeting. And now tonight, they're going to be able to share their magnificent work with you. Their advisors, Mrs. Shontia Boyd, who's one of our vice principals for attendance and behavioral intervention. Mrs. Kiara Fisher, who's one of our school nurses at Mount Olive High School. And Mr. Everything For Us, Mr. Siraj Ziad. How about a big warm welcome?
Are you doing a presentation on the board here?
Yes.
All right, I'm moving.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, community members. I am Shontia Boyd. And under the tutelage of Dr. Banjia and Mr. Stansberry, we present to you diversity, equity, and inclusion. This is our DEI Student Council. Just a quick fact about this wonderful, amazing group of students is that they organically came together to bring about the change that they desire to see. Not only in the high school, but across our district. Middle school down to elementary school. So their work, the beginning of their work will speak for itself.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, board members. I just want to introduce myself. My name is Rochelle. I'm the head of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee as well as the Policy Committee. So. We're going to be covering essentially who we are, our varying committees, and how we operate. And so we're a diverse group of students dedicated to making our school's environment reflective of our student body and our staff's cultures and identities. At its core, our mission is to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion within our school's environment for all students and faculty. As our diversity grows, we aim to create a more comfortable and safe space by uplifting students' voices through curriculum, policy, and cultural changes. We aim to unify our varying backgrounds by celebrating our traditions and educating our students through a worldview.
I am Rebecca. I am the head of our social media committee. Some of the issues that we would like to address in our school setting, our curriculum base, as long with issues in our school setting within the school. And we also hope to address wheelchair accessibility issues along with mental health. And we have our month-long celebrations that we aim to really celebrate everyone's cultures and spread it around our school.
So to start off with curriculum and instruction, when it comes to curriculum-based changes, our first step for action are to reference students that are enrolled in particular courses throughout our school and really gauge how they feel they're really taking the material that's provided to them. And given that information, we'll be, we want to be able to add courses that are relevant to the student body and review current curriculum to see what can be changed. Also going along with that, we'll review board of ed policy to go about changing the curriculum for varying classes. So in itself, we really thought that curriculum and instruction was a significant aspect to our group. As there, we saw that there were certain disparities when it came to specifically historically-based courses. We want to make sure that when it comes to courses in that nature, that it's not only reflective of a Eurocentric point of view, but we really get educated on an entire world. And then heading into policies and regulations, I'm also the head of this along with Kamala. And we really just want to ensure that our policies reflect a zero tolerance for any act of discrimination that goes toward our student population. And right now, we're drafting 1520, regulations for the 1523 Comprehensive Equity Plan, which was drafted by you guys, to ensure that there's an equal environment for every student within our district. And we really feel that it's important for our work that we're doing right now to not only affect us, but the people that will be coming after us.
I'm Kamala Williams. I'm a senior, and I'm also the head of the Policy and Regulations Committee. And with this committee, our goal is to ensure that our policies reflect a zero tolerance for any act of discrimination to guard our student population as well as our staff. I'm also the head of the Activities Committee along with Larissa Peraldo. And our mission is to bring different cultures and communities together by engaging in fun activities. Some of our plans include celebrating month-long observations, including Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Black History Month, Native American Heritage Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and more. Another extension of our Activities Committee also includes the Storytime Project. In celebration of Native American Heritage Month, we thought it would be a perfect opportunity to launch our Storytime Project back in November. We went to Sandshire Elementary School and read books to kindergarten students that related to Native American heritage with messages that the students can learn from and even relate to.
Hi, I'm Larissa, and I'm also a senior, and I'm also head of the Activities Committee along with Kamala. And so far, we have been able to put together and host fun and creative ways for the high school as well as the community to participate in. With these activities, it's important that we keep everyone engaged and interested in learning about different cultures and communities. Our first activity outreach to the community was in participating in Key Club's Safe Trick-or-Treat event. This was a way for us to promote ourselves for the first time, reaching all grade levels and showing the community what we are starting up. Also, for Hispanic Heritage Month, we put together a spirit week full of themed days the whole student body was able to participate in. Throughout the week, we also had activities such as bracelet making, pinning up flags for representation, and Hispanic dancing. And most recently, for Black History Month, we had another spirit week that highlighted black excellence in things like music, fashion, and sports. We also hosted a student versus faculty basketball fundraiser in partnership with MOBA, who brought some of their third to sixth graders to participate in a halftime knockout contest. We were successful in raising money, which will also help us moving forward in other events and activities. We were also able to reach the community again and get the student body excited for more of our upcoming events. And we know we were successful because in connecting with our student body, as we've had several interested students reach out to us to join our efforts.
So again, I am Rebecca Scott. I am a junior, and I am the head of our social media committee. We have made a lot of progress on spreading the overall message of our club through our council, through our social media accounts. We have Instagram, we have TikTok, and we have really been able to reach staff, students, and parents throughout our platform. So this is our Instagram account. As you can see, we have many posts. We have a good amount of followers, it's even more than we did the last time we did this presentation. So we have our little message at the top and our logo where we can really like spread what we're about. So this, these are some of the individual posts. We have our post for Hispanic Heritage Month to let the students know the spirit where and what they can do, what they can bring in. We have some of our teacher participation in our spirit weeks. We have our participation from Mr. Stansberry and Mr. Benfati for their basketball game. And some of these videos have reached over 2,000 plays, meaning we reached a wide audience of over 2,000 people through this one platform. And we're not done spreading our message.
I'm Jose, and I'm the head of the multilingual students along with Kayla, but she couldn't make it today. But our plan is to start helping ML students feel more comfortable in the Mount Olive High School environment and community by providing resources and activities. Some of our plans are to. To make some activities to start helping the students feel more comfortable. We also plan to create a buddy system between ML students and students with English as their first language. And we are currently utilizing the Google Form to get an overview of how the ML students are accustomeding to the environment in Mount Olive High School.
To bridge the divide between ML students and the rest of the student body, we have curated a Google Form to gauge the comfortability of these students to better cater to their needs. Our ML committee strives to diminish the divide between these students and, between these students and the people who have English as their first language to make our student environment more inclusive and available to everybody.
Hello, my name is Nusimiy Hyson, and I'm the treasurer of the DEI Student Council. I'll be presenting on the behalf of Elizabeth, who is the head of the Mental Health Committee. Unfortunately, she was unable to be here this evening, but I'm going to share with you what she has been working on. The purpose of the Mental Health Committee is to provide resources to minimize mental health and other health-related struggles for all students. Some goals are to update Mount Olive websites to expand mental health resources, offer quiet spaces for students before school, during tag, and during lunch, and to require teachers to provide trigger and just trigger warnings for any films or anything they would like to add into their lessons. To reach these goals, we have planned a bulletin board to display in our school, intended to provide information of varying mental health and health disabilities along with providing resources for those who are struggling. And an extension of acting, of action plan includes reaching out to Ms. Bosch about providing warning and possible providing accommodations for future drama club performances to help these with sensitive, to help people with sensitivity to light and sound.
So for some areas of improvement, currently, we are working to recruit more people for each of the committees. Being a smaller group as of right now, and with how much effort goes into carrying everything out, it's really important for us to expand. But as we have mentioned before, we've gotten emails from people that are looking to join. And to help further recruit people, DEI is currently designing a poster to put around the school for awareness for those who are interested in joining. So some issues that we face, the high school, middle school, and elementary schools all operate and function in different buildings. So sometimes it is difficult to communicate and plan events across the district with the other schools. When planning these events, we also have to consider preserving time for educational hours and making sure we as well as the other students obtain these educational hours. Another issue that we face are meeting times as a council. We only get 20 minutes twice per week to meet. There's a lot of work to be done in such short time. Help us by supporting our fundraisers, promoting and spreading the word about Mount Olive High School DEI Student Council.
All right, so just to wrap up, we just want to thank you guys for your time. And please, if you have any kind of feedback for us, we're open to hear it. Thank you.
How about another round of applause for our DEI Student Council? What a fantastic presentation and a message. And these students are absolutely dedicated and committed to their causes, and we couldn't be more proud of them. So thank you once again to the students and their advisors. The other presentation that I wanted to introduce is that we know that we have incredible student accomplishments inside the classroom. But this also stretches well beyond the threshold of the classroom, as evidenced by our DEI Student Council. But another group that has demonstrated excellence in their commitment to their school and their community is our Mount Olive Marauder Varsity Wrestling Program. And let me just read just a few things about this program. They won the state sectional championship three years in a row for a total of six in school history. They were the Group Four runner-up this year. We qualified 12 wrestlers for regions. It's the most in school history. We had nine district champs, one second-place finish, and two third-place finishes. We had seven district, or District Seven champions, two region winners, seven total placers, two first place, one second place, two third place, two fourth place. We are the top public school in Morris County. We rank 16th by the State Coaches Association, seventh overall public school in the rankings. We finished 11th in team scoring at states. That's third overall with public schools. Just keep in mind who was ranked in front of us, private and parochials. Seven years in a row with a state medalist. This is the year that we had our first individual state champion in 36 years. And coincidentally, joining us this evening is that state champion from 36 years ago, 1988, 152 pounds. How about a big, warm welcome and applause for Mr. Anthony Guedi? As you can imagine, that presented an amazing Kodak moment this evening. So we couldn't be more proud, and thank you for being here to help us celebrate. Mount Olive is one of the top public school programs year in and year out, and that's really due to the leadership of the program. Jeez, I can't even remember, Sean. Sean's been our head coach for at least 25 years, and that's absolutely unheard of. Funny story, we hired him as the varsity assistant, and about two days later, I called him back and said, Sean, guess what? You're going to be the head coach. And it's been an incredible journey ever since. I'd like to welcome to the podium to talk about tonight's program and to also award some outstanding performances. How about a big round of applause for our head wrestling coach, Mr. Sean Smythe? Like to thank the Board of Education for having us here tonight, the Mount Olive Wrestling Team. All your support. I know we ask for a lot, but you can see the rewards that we're getting in return. We do a lot of traveling throughout the country. We travel out to Pennsylvania, down the shore. We're not vacationing, okay? Well, as Coach Ryerson always says, this is business. And everywhere we go, it is business. And these business trips have been taken, traveling around, and we've gotten our kids some good looks. And we got, we sent two kids last year, one to Princeton, Division One Wrestling, one to Virginia Tech. And we're sending two more young athletes to Division One Wrestling next year. So we're very proud of that, and that's because of all the support here at the Board of Education. So thank you very much for helping us out. The support of the board, I also like to thank the school administration. Mr. Stansberry has had almost all of our matches, and I appreciate that. Dr. Banjia, thank you so much for being a fan. I've seen some of our matches as well, and I see some board members kind of come in and out. I'm a little busy, but I do see you guys, but thank you for coming. And obviously, Mrs. Colleen Soufley, who couldn't be here tonight, she's really done a tremendous job working with the program. And I think when she first came to Mount Olive, it was a bit of a culture shock. She's definitely a soccer coach, and the world of wrestling was all new to her. So she's done a great job working with us on our program. And I also have to thank Mrs. Katie Brubray, the athletic secretary, because I'm in her office every day, and she works with me, which is not easy to do. Just ask my assistant coaches, and got to give a shout out to her. And behind every great program, I've adopted a philosophy a long time ago, surround yourself with great people. And I've been able to find some great people to be part of the program. And one of my mainstays has been here for a long time is Coach Romano. Can you come on up here, Coach Romano? Don't be shy. I was also able to get, Coach Barquetta was a head coach at Morris Knolls for many years. Come on up, Coach Barquetta. One of our recent additions in the back there, Mr. Brian Schneider. Come on up, Brian. And some other coaches just couldn't make it tonight. I want to thank my wrestlers for sitting in the back and behaving, so thank you, guys. You're making me look good. As Mr. Stansberry said about our team this year, we were 16-5. Okay, we wrestled six top 20 teams this year, splitting three and three with those teams. We developed a very difficult schedule, and it definitely paid off for our kids. Like I said, our tough tournaments we entered, it was absolutely awesome to go out there and be part of that and see some of the top-notch competition in the state. And we recently just got the national rankings came up, and I don't know if we've ever had a Mount Olive kid in it. I don't know if Anthony Guedi was in, I'm not sure, I'll talk about that later. But Tyler Higginson actually be the number four kid in the country. Now, he's the number four ranked kid in the country currently, so that was quite an accomplishment. So we're going to honor not just our two wrestlers tonight, but it's not about the two guys. It's about the.
two guys, it's about the entire team. So I'm going to call up each wrestler that I see here tonight and give them an award. Our team did win the North One Group Four State Section Championship this year, and that's a heck of an accomplishment. I believe it's what, five years in a row, guys? It's five years in a row. We've definitely put our stamp on that mark, and we plan on going back next year down to the groups and hopefully come back with another Group Four State Championship. All right, so let me do this first. I'm going to give out these two awards to Higgins, then I'll give out the teams. The first one, we had two wrestlers placed in our state tournament this year, and the New Jersey State Tournament is one of the toughest tournaments in the country. It's a very good tournament. I mean, it is a meat grinder tournament. A lot of the kids who place 1-3 are going to wrestle somewhere in college and at a big college. Tyler Venus, okay, this year was a Morris County Champion. He's a three-time district champion, a region champion, voted outstanding wrestler this year. He has a school record of 82 pins, that's unheard of, 82 pins, and a career record of 114 and 29, placing third in the state this year. And next year, he'll be wrestling at Bucknell University, definitely going to miss him. That's Tyler Venus. Tyler, come on up, buddy. Next guy that is going to be honored here tonight, again, it's been since 1988 since we've had a state champ. And when I came here in 1999, it was, wow, you look at the board like, wow, we got to get a name up there with Anthony Guedi, and it's very hard to do. It's not an easy thing to do. These kids go year-round, they train. And I was glad that we were able to make that happen this year and going down the state tournament. I mean, this could have been Tyler Venus tonight, this could have been Higgins. That's how tough the tournament is, things went his way. He leaves Mount Olive as a two-time Morris County Champ, a three-time district champ, a two-time regional champ, also voted OW, so both the boys voted outstanding wrestlers this year. Two-time state place winner, taking fourth in 2023. And this year, he was our NJSIAA State Champion with a career record of 117 and 18 wins. Captain Tyler Higgins.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'd just like to ask the, I have to call out a lot of names here. I'm going to have all the wrestlers come up and have them hand out individual awards to them, just to acknowledge the fact that they were North One, Group Two, State Sectional Champions. So guys, why don't you come on up here? If you can make a lineup coming up this side here and shake some hands. Come on over here, Justin Bullock, you can be the line leader. Come on over here. Put the smartest guy up front, Justin, the front.
There we go. Congratulations. Yep, great job. Congratulations. Yep, congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Congratulations, Alan. Congratulations, great job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Mr. Rivers, congratulations. Yep, absolutely.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. 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 Great job, buddy. Congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
So ladies and gentlemen, this is this year's 2023-2024 North One Group Four State Section Champion, Mount Olive Marauder Wrestling Team. Thank you.
All right, didn't even have to give them permission, they're all running. So before all of the kids leave, do we have any comments from the Board? Because we're going to go into a five-minute recess to let the children who don't want to stay for the budget and
And they're already leaving.
And they're already gone.
They're gone. Congratulations.
All right. Do I have a motion for about a five-minute recess so the kids can clear out before our next presentation?
I make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five, five-minute break, we'll let the kids clear out, and then we're going to have our preliminary budget presentation, and then we're going to have our NJSBA rep give our superintendent evaluation presentation on the process.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we are back into session. We are actually going to have Ms. Charlene Peterson come up. She's our NJ SBA rep. She's going to explain to the public and to the board the process for the superintendent evaluation that's required to be done every year. We're changing it all up.
Okay, I was wondering how that was going to happen.
I got you.
Okay, perfect.
I got you.
I just want to thank the board and thank everyone here as well for the opportunity to talk to the board about the superintendent's evaluation process. And just really wanted to say what a pleasure it was for me to be able to be in the audience and see your amazing students. As much as we tell boards that, you know, that the purpose of your board meetings, the purpose of the work that you do should be to be focused on student achievement, when I get the opportunity to witness it, it really is a wonderful experience. So, I just, again, commend the board for really focusing on the work of your students. But as much as we talk about promoting excellence, part of the way that we help contribute to that as a board is through the evaluation of the superintendent. We know that, you know, we've mentioned that we don't run the district. We just make sure that it's well-run. So, the way that we do that is by exercising our governance oversight. And an important way that we do that is through evaluating the superintendent. So, really, just want to focus on the fact that it really is a tool for us to work together with the superintendent as a team. It shouldn't be considered a gotcha, and it shouldn't be considered anything negative. It's really a working relationship between the board and the superintendent, and again, with the intent to promote excellence, professional excellence in the superintendent, improving skills, working together, all with the bottom line of trying to improve the quality of education for our students. So, in terms of that, it's a process. And the process starts first by making sure that we're in compliance with statute and code about this process. So, it's what's required of a board is that you have to evaluate the superintendent at least once a year. It has to be in writing. Need to discuss the findings. The evaluation should be based on the goals and objectives of the district, so we'll talk about that in just a minute. The responsibilities of the superintendent, and then any other criteria prescribed by the State Board of Ed. And then, in terms of how we carry that out, so that it has to be completed by July 1st, has to be prepared by majority of the board's total membership. And then, it needs to include areas of strength, areas needing improvement, recommendations for professional growth, and then tying it to our students, how are our students doing? And then, there is a summary conference or a summary meeting with the board and the superintendent to go over the evaluation, and says that it should include a total of the, a majority of the total board membership. So, again, this is what's required of a board going through this process. So, New Jersey School Boards has a tool to help the board to be in compliance. So, first, starting out, any board member who has a relative that's employed in the district would be prohibited from participating. And I believe you usually had one, maybe two, right? Board members that, that that was the case? So, recognizing that when a board member has a conflict such as this, that they essentially have no more rights than any other member of the public, so they would not be able to participate in the process in any way whatsoever. And again, that just comes down to, you know, any perceived kind of benefit that come, could come to your relative as a result of you being on the board. So, you know, initially, we were asked, okay, well, this is all great. You just told us what we have to do, has to be done by July 1st. Like, what happens if we don't do this? So, a few years ago, the state changed some of the requirements in CUSAC, the monitoring process, and now has assigned some points to these things. So, there are now six points to a board making sure that they complete the evaluation process by July 1st. So, we, you know, don't want to give up any points if we don't have to, right? So, you want to make sure that, from the board's perspective, that we're doing our part. And then, another area that's come to a, really, a lot of attention lately is the fact that one of the requirements also is that new board members have to be trained on the evaluation process within six months of taking office. So, which would make sense. You should be trained on the evaluation before you do it, right? And it's really, you know, difficult somewhat, too, because as a new board member here, you are coming on in January, and we'll see that the evaluation year starts July 1st. So, six months is already passed before you're even being sworn in to be, you know, to be part of this process. So, that's why it's important that you, you know, at least get the training on it. So, one of the, like I said, this is now one of the components of CUSAC. So, essentially, the evidence that, that the state will be looking for is that your board members have completed Governance 1. But that really just kind of checks the box of making sure that you did do it, but in order for it to be more effective, it is, you know, best to have a training like this, where the whole board is together, hearing what this process consists of. So, and really wanted to make that point that it is a process. So, like I said, the evaluation year starts July 1st, ends June 30th, and it usually starts with the setting of those district goals, so that we are, you know, allowing the superintendent time to get the goals accomplished. And then, an important part that I wanted to talk about is where the, kind of, the starburst is there, talking about the evaluation pre-conference. So, as we, before anyone starts writing the evaluation, doing the evaluation, just wanted to emphasize the importance of the board and the superintendent coming together and having a conversation about the evaluation process, about what the accomplishments were, answering any board member questions. You know, we all have different lengths of experience on the board, different committees that we serve in. So, we want to make sure that when it's time to start the evaluation, that all of the board members have the information that they need in order to make this be an informed process. And, you know, it was one of the things, I was just talking to the county superintendent about this, and, you know, she was saying like that this is really a great opportunity in finding that in her work with superintendents, that they don't always have the conversations with the board about the evaluation process, and just the importance of doing that. So, we said, okay, we're both going to kind of push the initiative on both ends, and so that we can, you know, help this to be a better process. So, I'm just going to kind of take you through all of the steps here. So, like I said, it starts with the goals piece, and again, it's because of part of what is required. And then, we really, if we think about that, and why it's such an important part of this, is we think about all of the work that goes into running a school district, all the responsibilities of the superintendent. When we can hone down onto three or four goals that we think are so important to move the district forward, that we are going to hold the superintendent accountable by putting them in her evaluation, that's how then we can ensure that we are helping to move the district forward. And, you know, it was mentioned that you were going to be starting a strategic plan. So, that's really an important way then, from here on out, that will help form what these district goals are. We want to make sure that the work we're doing, the priorities that we have, have come from our stakeholders. So, what better way than to hear from them, have them explain to us what that roadmap or what that direction needs to look like in the next five years? And then, as we consider what our work is annually, that's how we carry that strategic plan out, by looking from the strategic plan for guidance then, as we set these district goals. So, it's really great to hear how all of these pieces are coming together and working together as a way to move the district forward, involving your community and stakeholders in that process. So, an important part, too, of the evaluation is evidence. So, I've mentioned, you know, that especially for new board members, when you come on in January, and that six months has already taken place, and now you're being, going to be asked to evaluate the superintendent, you need then to rely on evidence. What evidence can be provided to you for you to be able to determine what accomplishments have taken place in the district? And that's another area where there should be a conversation between the board and the superintendent, because one of the things that I'm finding is that sometimes the board perhaps needs that, they need the evidence in one way, and the superintendent's providing it in another way, and saying like, I really wish we would have this conversation so that we're all in agreement about what kind of information we need and what format we want it on. So, again, another area to really come to an agreement on. So, the process starts, like I said, with those district goals. So, again, just wanted to show you that the way New Jersey School Board's tool is set up, the tool is set up to allow the superintendent to provide evidence, so that when you are in the tool, when you are evaluating the superintendent, that you will be able to see evidence that the superintendent has provided, and just be able to click right on those links or click right while you're in there, so that you can see that evidence that has been provided to you, again, to help this be an informed process. So, our tool is set up to have two areas. The first one are those district goals that we just talked about. Then, also importantly, as we talked about identifying those areas of strength, identifying those areas where more growth and attention is needed, one of the ways we do that is by evaluating the superintendent's performance based on leadership standards, professional leadership standards. So, you know, it shouldn't be like what each one of us think individually, but we should be evaluating the superintendent based on, you know, professional standards that had been identified for this work. And earlier, when I talked about the, kind of, the legal guidelines, and it said other such criteria prescribed by the State Board of Ed, well, the New Jersey State Board of Ed did adopt the, the National Leadership Standards. So, those standards are what are the basis then for the standards in this evaluation tool. So, the tool is kind of set up that it goes into three progressions. So, the first one starts by making sure that each individual board member has their input into this process. Then, we take that individual input, and New Jersey School Boards does, and we have a program that's set up that kind of starts to compile it. As soon as the first board member's done, it starts like a compiled document. Then, when the second one's done, it adds that one. When the third one's done, it adds that one, so that when the full board is done, there is a compiled document of all of those responses, and it's anonymous. So, it now is a tool available to the board to help the board have an understanding of what the board's thoughts are, you know, about the evaluation. And then, the third part of this then is, so that compiled document represents everyone's responses. Similar to all of the other work that we do, the superintendent's evaluation should then be based on the majority opinion. So, this is what helps us then to be able to extract the majority opinion, because we now can take that compiled document, see everyone's opinions, and then now can extract from that the majority opinion. And then, that's what is the superintendent's actual evaluation then, that annual performance report. So, we'll help kind of see what some of these look like. So, the process starts with actually the superintendent is the first one that logs in into New Jersey School Board's tools. So, we recently just sent an email, I don't know, a few weeks ago or so, I think, to all the superintendents in the state, making them aware that the tool is open, if, you know, any of them were ready to get started. So, that the superintendent logs in, inputs the district goals, and then inputs whatever other evidence she's going to provide. And then, once she's done and hits submit, then there's a 48-hour window for her to go back in, in case she said, you know, like, I should have said this, or forgot to put that in, or any additional information. And then, once that 48-hour window is up, then an email is automatically sent to all of the board members, to each one of you individually, with your link then to go in for you to be able to start the process. So, the, this is kind of what the tool looks like then. So, from the goals portion, like I said, the superintendent logs in, would input each one of those district goals, and then is able to provide a self-assessment. Does she think the goal was achieved? Think satisfactory progress was made? Or think little or no progress was made? And sometimes, one of the things that we're seeing are that more and more goals, or sometimes multi-year goals, that can't be accomplished in one year. So, seeing something as satisfactory progress made, you know, we would need to think of that sometimes. It could be the best that we were able to do in that particular year, because it's a multi-year goal. Then, like, then the superintendent is able to provide comments, able to provide evidence for the board member consideration. Then, when you, as an individual board member, log in, you will be able to see the information that the superintendent put in. You'll be able to see the superintendent's rating and comments. And then, you'll be able, then you'll be asked to provide your rating. What, what do you think? Do you think the goal was achieved, satisfactory progress was made, or little or no progress? And then, you are able to provide comments as well. And a lot of times, I see board members in the comments they provide, is that they're speaking to the superintendent, but what you're actually doing is providing comments to your fellow board members, to help your fellow board members understand why you gave the rating that you did, so that when the board comes together to have a discussion about that majority opinion, you now have a clearer understanding of the thought process of each of your board members because of the time that was taken to provide these comments. So, then, the next portion then, like I said, were those professional standards. So, these are the six standards that are in the superintendent's evaluation. And a few years ago, we updated the tool, and the standards used to kind of be more along functional lines, like finance, facilities, curriculum. And then, I said, you know what? There's really kind of a realization that superintendent's jobs are much larger than that, and a lot of it has to do with the professional capacity, culture of care, like, kind of, really, those other things that are equally important in terms of making this a successful district. So, one of the areas that I wanted to call to the board's attention is that one of the options you have in this rating is to say "not observed." So, for those new board members who just got on the board, or board members that find themselves in situations where you just don't have enough information, we want you to be able to evaluate the superintendent wherever you can, but don't feel compelled to evaluate something that you don't have enough information on. And it's not considered a negative, it's not considered a positive, it's just, I didn't get, I just didn't see it. So, this is an example of like what one of those six standards looks like. So, there's a, you know, an explanation of the standard, but then, what, one of the things we did as well is for each one of those ratings, exemplary, proficient. One of the things we're finding in the past is that two board members may have had kind of the same thought about what the superintendent's performance, but what, to me, was exemplary, say, to you was proficient. So, we wanted to make sure that we, the boards kind of had more of a common language about what that meant. So, we now have then a unique definition for each rating, for each standard. You can kind of see in the red there then where those links would appear if the superintendent had put in, you know, links. So, usually, what we see happen is that you might have like a Google folder, say, that will be Standard 1. And then, the superintendent would put all the information related to Standard 1 in that folder. So, then, you just have to do one click, open up the folder, and see what's in there relative that's, to that standard. We also take the standard and break it down into kind of some more smaller meaningful parts, which are the indicators. So, and we have the board members give ratings next to the indicators, even though what we're really looking for is the overall assessment of the standard, but we want to make sure you're being thoughtful about it. Want to make sure that you have looked through, you know, all of the parts of that standard, so that when you do go down and give an overall rating on that standard, we know that you've thought about it, you just didn't go right down to the bottom and click a box, that you, you know, you had to think about all of the components of it. So, the system does not fill out like that overall standard rating, so even if you had checked all the indicators, say, in one column, you, you're still going to be asked to go in and fill out, you know, what you believe the overall rating of that standard to be. And then, you also can provide comments for each standard for your fellow board members. So, then, again, said, once all of the board members have, the individual board members who are able to participate in the process, have completed the process, then New Jersey School Boards, like I said, our program is set up that it automatically compiles those reports into anonymous documents that are available, accessible to the board president, with the understanding that they will be shared with the other board members, but that's just the portal then, that the documents are accessible from. So, this is an example of what that compiled report might look like. So, here's an example of a goal. So, in this goal example, it was an eight-member board participated, the superintendent in their self-assessment, so the goal was achieved, six members agreed, one member thought satisfactory progress was made, one member thought little or no progress was made, and then the asterisk under the member comments would suggest that that's a different member speaking each time. So, that's how it remains anonymous, but you get to see what everyone's input is. So, this then, you can see then how this could be a working tool for the board to be able to identify what the majority opinion would be. And then, this is a sample of what a compiled standard would look like. So, again, taking all of those indicators, showing what each one of the board members' ratings were, what the overall rating was for that standard by each one of the members, and then, the comments, again, would be shown with the asterisk. So, again, so we now have gone through individual input. We then compile the individual input into one anonymous document. So, now, like I said, similar to other work that we do, we now need then to look at that anonymous compiled document and say, okay, for each one of these areas, what is the majority opinion? What is the thoughts of the board to then be put into the final piece, which is that annual performance report template? So, and again, that helps the board stay in compliance with the areas that were required of us. It will, you know, talk about the accomplishment of goals, the areas of strength, areas where more growth are needed, and allows the board to provide some overall summative comments and the, the work of our students. And then, this is the document that, when CUSAC comes to look for the superintendent's evaluation, this is the document then that the board president and the superintendent both sign as the evidence that this process took place, and took place, you know, it was completed by July 1st. So, here, it allows the board to take each district goal, give an overall majority opinion evaluation on whether that goal was accomplished or not, have identification of overall supporting remarks, do the same thing for each one of the standards, and then, again, to take, again, using the standards as the basis to identify those areas of strength, identify those areas where more growth and improvement are needed, and then the opportunity to provide any open-ended, you know, summative comments from the board. And then, the last piece of this is the, you know, that important then sit-down conference to go through the evaluation with the board. So, while it was stated, when, when we were looking at the statute and code, it said a majority of the board members are supposed to attend this, it would be our recommendation to have every board member who's able to attend, to, to attend this as well, because as much as we said that the annual performance report or the document that the superintendent receives reflects the majority opinion, one of the rights I have is the, if I'm a holder of the minority opinion, is I have the right to be heard. So, when we looked at that example of that goal, where, you know, six board members thought it was achieved, but one didn't, if I'm that one that didn't, that may not find its way in the document that the superintendent received, but I have the right then to say, you know what? Everyone else, you know, the majority opinion says this goal was achieved, but I was expecting to see these things that I didn't see, and that's why I think differently. So, this then provides you, as the holder of that minority opinion, the opportunity to be heard. So, an important part of this work to make sure that we meet that July 1st deadline is that the board should set itself an evaluation calendar. And so, ideally, it's suggested that you take that July 1st deadline and work backwards, and kind of say, okay, when's your last meeting in June? Whenever that is, then make sure that you have that, you know, that summary conference sit-down meeting with the superintendent. Then, back up from there and say, okay, when do we need to make sure then that we have that annual performance report done that includes the majority opinion? Then, we need to make sure then before that, when are each one of our individual evaluations done? Then, we'd have to back in, when does the superintendent need to have her part done? So, that all of those steps can be aligned to make sure that we're done by the July 1st deadline, and that ideally, we can accomplish these steps that we need to by using the existing board meetings that are in place, rather than having to schedule any special meetings to try and accomplish this work. So, if we look at then, kind of, you know, what makes for an effective process, again, the importance of everyone's voices being heard individually, that the board coming to a consensus on the majority opinion, the rights of the minority to be heard, the importance of this, using this as a tool to strengthen and build a productive board and superintendent relationship, make sure that we're in compliance with statute and code. You know, and I have to say, sometimes, board members will ask, well, like, do we have to use your tool? And I'll say, you can use whatever you want. What's important is that you have to be in compliance with statute and code, and this is just a way to help ensure that you do that, recognizing that the, the end result that we're aiming for in this process is student success. So, in terms of food for thought of this, to think about this as, you know, not just a once-a-year thing that we're doing, but really to look at it as a process. So, when we talk about setting those district goals in the summer, or, you know, firming them, then throughout the year, we should be getting progress updates, how are we doing, what's been accomplished, so that when it comes time to do the evaluation, there shouldn't be a surprise to the board about where we are in terms of the accomplishments, and there shouldn't be any surprise to the superintendent about what, you know, she thinks the board's thoughts are about that. So, we should be scheduling it as part of our meetings, parts of ways to make sure that, that, you know, we're informed on the progress that's been made. We also, too, tend to, as board, sometimes give higher priority to the latest and the greatest, like whatever's happening now, and sometimes that gets higher weight than really thinking about or being reflective of what's happened over the entire year. So, again, sometimes, as much as we say that, you know, the superintendent may be providing us evidence, we should also be thinking about ways to, you know, maintain evidence ourselves and say, oh, this is great, like, I'm going to remember this when it comes time, you know, to do the evaluation, come up with a system for you to retain evidence. And then, you know, I just can't emphasize enough the importance of this being, you know, a really critical governance responsibility. So, for all of the board members that are able to participate, to please do so. You know, usually, I am working with the board president and saying like, okay, six done, like, we got to get that last board member, too, to, to try and get as many people done as we possibly can, because just the value of, of hearing from everyone's voice. And then, I think that might be it. That's why I think nothing's clicking as I'm moving, right? So, just wanted to see if the board had any questions for me at all about this process?
Are there any questions from the board, from Ms. Peterson?
Okay, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Thank you. So, we're actually not going to move our seats, because next up is, are we doing our presentation on preliminary budget? We're going to have that up on the screen as well.
So, as we wait for Blake to bring up the presentation, I would like to first thank you, Michone, for the hard work she has demonstrated so far, starting in this district. Michone started in August, late August, actually, and she really has truly hit the ground running to make sense of our budget, in order to ensure that we are maximizing our money to the point of servicing our students. So, at this point, we're going to be bringing up our presentation. So, just to give you an idea as far as how our presentation's going to be organized, we're going to start out with looking at our state aid, followed by enrollment numbers, as well as revenue and expenditures, what exactly is going to be put into this budget, the impact, the tax levy impact, and then, obviously, questions for the board at the conclusion of the presentation. But before we even get into that, I wanted to take a moment, if you can just click on to that, is to look at our calendar concern as far as our budget development. Michone, do you want to go over this?
So, budget development actually started in November. As Dr. Banja had said, I started with the district in late August, and one of the first things, and in addition to everything else, was... things, and in addition to everything else, was I needed to learn the district's budget, what is included, what is not included, every detail of the budget, every line item was scrutinized and questioned and reviewed. The board adopted this preliminary budget schedule at their December 18th meeting, and this is from that meeting. I did not bring mine with me. It has been updated as each target has been hit. It's about three or four pages. I did meet with every building principal, every department, every office staff worker, and we went through their entire budget. We went through their current year budget. We reviewed what was budgeted in the current year, what was spent, what hasn't been spent, are you going to spend it, what's in next year's budget. I am a believer in budgeting for what you need. Some will call it zero-based budgeting. I think that's the best way to keep your budget managers, your building principals, your department heads, where they can effectively manage their budget. So if any emergencies arise, and I say to them, I need $20,000, where can you find it in your budget? They're able to do so, because they built their own budget, and they're managing their budget. So that's how we went through this budget season.
I would like the public and also the board to notice, if you look at this calendar, what a collaborative effort it was. Michoni took a great deal of time, as she pointed out to me, with everyone on the team, including the board members, for everyone to have a clear understanding as far as what the budget looks like this year, as well as what we're going to be getting to next year. So it was really a great process to be a part of. Go back.
All right, we need to make that a little bigger.
Yeah. Make that a little bigger. Who do you want to? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hi.
Oh, that's better. Okay. Okay, so this spreadsheet is to try to bring some sense to the state aid that Mount Olive received this year. The district received an additional almost $5.1 million in state aid, which was fantastic, because the district has been underfunded for several years. And I'm not going to bore you with all the calculations here, but what I want to emphasize is that the main thrust of a district's state aid is based on two major things, which is the third and fourth line down. One is the equalized valuations, and that's based on the real estate value of the district. And the second one is the district's income, which is based on the total income of the residents in the district. And I will tell you that these numbers for 2023-24 are based on year 2020 tax returns that the Division of Revenue is reflecting in the district income. For 24-25, that's 2021 tax returns. So based on those two numbers, and with the equalized multipliers that you see below, I have no idea where the state gets those numbers. That number, those calculations are statewide, and that's how they come up with your equalization aid. And as a result, if you could scroll down, please, you will see here that the net state, you'll see in the 23-24 year, the district was underfunded by about $2.4 million. And now, moving forward to 24-25, we have been fully funded. So this is the last year of the state aid calculations. So next year, the district's state aid will be based on straight equalized valuations and net income of the district, as well as enrollment, but it's not as significant as those two other figures. So just as a comparison, these are the top five districts with increases in state aid in Morris County. You'll see Dover, number one, Mount Olive, Booton Town, Warren Borough, and Parsippany, Troy Hills. These are the top in the county who received the most state aid. Equally speaking, there were many districts in Morris County that lost quite a bit of state aid. So everybody is hopeful moving forward that there can be, state aid can be somewhat stable so that districts can better prepare for their budgets. I have some colleagues that lost $3 million in state aid, and the, you're only, depending upon your size, you're losing staff or you're cutting significant programs. So Mount Olive was very fortunate to be fully funded, that we can provide our services to the students of the district.
You know, I just want to reiterate that, you know, the term fortunate is also based upon what the state also believes that we need as a school district, right? So certainly, when you look at, you know, the money that we received and how you want to connotate it as extra, it's not extra. It's, this money is calculated on what we demonstrated as a school district in need of, and, you know, thereby, we are going to be spending this money on our students in a manner that's going to ensure that both their experiences in and out of the classroom are going to be able to maximize their educational experiences while their time here in Mount And just to talk about...
I didn't do that. There you go, okay.
So just a little understanding, historical understanding of our enrollment here. As you can tell, our enrollment is going up. Certainly, if you look at from a year-to-year projection, you know, I think we're going to be going up close to about 70 or 80 kids. I want to be clear about that number, too. Those numbers may be small in your mind, but if you look at our special ed population, for example, our special ed population has increased 15% over the past four school years, 15%. What those added expenses require, more teachers, more resources, and more overall costs. Along with that, each of those programs that we've added in the past five years are also into the benefit of our students. So while enrollment on the surface level may not be increasing to the, you know, the most basic eye, but certainly, the students that are coming to our district and the needs they present are much more sophisticated and much more diverse, and thereby, cost more money for us to spend. And as we're going to tell you, as far as where we're going to be spending this money, it's all back to our students.
It's kind of small. It's expenditure. There you go. Okay, this worksheet are the revenues of the district, and once the board adopts, just to give you a little background information, once the board adopts the budget this evening, it then gets submitted to the county office. And the county office has until April 20th to approve the budget, at which time, the advertised budget is generated, which will be posted on the district's website. And this is the format of the advertised budget. So I wanted the public to be familiar with the numbers that they're going to be seeing, not just tonight, but once the advertised budget is published, and of course, the board will be having their budget hearing around, I think it's the first meeting in May, I think it's May 3rd or something. But again, I just wanted them, I wanted the public to be aware and the board of the dollars and how they're presented to you. So moving from left to right, the first column are the audited numbers from last school year. The second column is the revised budget. Usually with revenues, we do not revise the revenues. They are adjusted out during the audit process. The third column is the proposed budget for revenues for next year, and the last column is the difference between the proposed minus the current year, and then obviously, the percentage going across. So how the tax levy, you're, obviously, your main source of revenue to support the budget is from the taxpayers. So how the tax levy is calculated, it takes the current year tax levy, and to that tax levy, normally, you're statutorily only allowed to increase the levy by 2%. You can exceed the 2% if the district has other options available to them, one of which would be an enrollment adjustment based on the weighted enrollment that's projected in the district. So Mount Olive has an enrollment adjustment available to them of $200,000. What happens is, you would take the current tax levy of $76.5 million, you add the $200,000 enrollment adjustment to that total, you then inflate it by the 2%, and that would give us our proposed budget. That's why the difference is 2.27%, and not the standard 2%. Other adjustments that the district could use to increase their tax levy would be a healthcare adjustment. That means if the district's projected healthcare is going to exceed the state health benefit allowance, and Mount Olive's does, to approximately about $720,000, but the district is not exercising that adjustment. We want to put it off until next year for any type of emergency. There is no need to use it at this time. There's also what's called banked cap. Banked cap is a term of a dollar amount that's generated between your maximum allowed tax levy, what you can increase your tax levy, and what the district decides to keep their tax levy at, and that difference is called banked cap. It's actually a little bit of savings, and that will, that can roll forward for up to three years. For those of you that were reviewing our current year budget from last year, the current year tax levy in that $76.5 million, the district exercised an enrollment adjustment of about $760,000, a healthcare adjustment of about $1.5 million, and banked cap of about $520,000, and that tax levy was overall 5.93%. So with this year, we're only proposing a 2.27% increase on the tax levy. So moving down to see the other revenues, can you slide that over a little bit to the right, so they can see the description? Okay. So after the tax levy, we have tuition in the district. The tuition comprises of our paid preschool program. We have about 30 students or so at $3,000 as the annual rate, and then also, we have quite an extensive in-district special education program that many districts in the area send their students to Mount Olive. That is valued at about $805,000. Those tuition students come to us from other districts, require tuition, and some of them have one-to-one aid services. So that's why you see that increased difference. As an aside, you know, it's kind of, you usually budget your revenues conservatively, because you don't want to take the chance if that revenue is not realized or not. So that's part of the reason why some of the revenues may seem lower in prior years. But I will tell you that that $800,000 for tuition received is a real number. These students are coming back next year. They're based on contract, so we're very confident with that. The next line, moving down, unrestricted miscellaneous revenues, that comprises of our before and after care program, about $80,000. We rent our facilities out for the middle school, the high school, the theaters. That's valued at about $75,000. We rent, the district rents the air dome rental, that's approximately $300,000. And we also have bank account interest, which is valued at about $400,000. I kept that a little bit conservative, because as we motor through the year-end, we'll be spending more money, the budget will be liquidated, and obviously, funds will not be in the bank account long enough to earn significant interest. The next line down is interest earned on our capital reserve account. That's a placeholder. The district does realize more revenue, but again, we're being conservative with that. Moving down is our state aid. You can see that, which is an increase of $5,094,000. Underneath that line, Medicaid, this of $154,000. This aid is given to us by the Department of Education. This is based on our students in district who receive Medicare services. Can we move down a little bit? Okay. And then after our semi-Medicare, we have budgeted fund balance from the operating budget. What that means is, as you're developing a subsequent year's budget, you're looking at your current year budget and see what kind of money, what kind of surpluses you have in the budget that you can use to support the future budget. So for the past several years, the district has, through their good savings and budgeting and spending wisely, they're able to save out of their current budgets significant money, excuse me, as you could say, to put forth for the subsequent year. For 24-25, after the district's audit, we had what's called excess surplus. And excess surplus is money that is outside of the district's allowable surplus calculations, and it has to be put forth for tax relief. So that's why it's in that column, that $4.6 million. Withdrawal from capital reserve. In this budget, we have a little bit over $4 million budgeted for capital projects, and through savings, we are only required to withdraw $1.2 million to support these projects. And the final withdrawal is from our maintenance reserve account, which supports our required maintenance budget. And our total revenues, you could see, is $127,000, $24,847, for an increase of about 8%. percent. Okay, I am not going to bore you and go through each line. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to talk about the lines that are increasing over ten percent. Okay, so the third line down, just as an aside, all of these accounts are broken down by programs. And this will tie out, this is a regurgitation of what the advertised budget is going to look like when it's posted on the website. Within these account lines is everything that the district needs to spend for those particular programs: salaries, supplies, contracted services, everything but benefits. Medical, dental benefits, other benefits are all in a line item at the bottom. All of the, all of these budgeted amounts include all the contractual obligations that the district is required, employment contracts, contracts for our utilities, our phone service, our copiers, everything under the sun we need to account for to move the district forward. So saying I'm going to touch about what's over ten percent, the third line down, basic skills. We have in this budget a new interventionist to support the students' needs for next year. English as a second language, which actually needs to be changed, right, to multi-language learners. We have in this budget new technology to support the various students' needs that we have who speak several languages fluently. We have, we go down to the before and after care programs, which are seeing a negative eighty-six percent, and the line underneath it for a negative sixty percent. These are our programs for MOSA and the after-school programs, the success academies. The reason why the budget is so drastically low is because the district still has their ARPESR funds that are left, and we're able to utilize these federal funds. They will expire next September, and they need to be liquidated by October nineteenth, I believe. But these funds will be able to support these summer and late spring programs. So that's why you see that drastic decrease right there. At-risk program, a decrease of thirty-seven percent, that's just better aligning the budget to what it is. Current year, it's one hundred and thirteen, we're looking more of seventy thousand next year, so that's pretty much the reason for that. Moving down to tuition, increasing by almost a million dollars. We have several new placements of students going out for district. We also budget for a few contingencies because you never know who's going to move into your district, and we need to be sure that we're able to service them to what their needs are. Attendance went up by $48,000. The district this year hired a second staff member in the attendance office. That's where that increase comes from. Can you scroll down, please? Child study team, eleven percent, or almost $300,000. Dr. Bangia will explain in a subsequent slide, but we are, we have in this budget a new pre-K team. We have a large preschool population that really is in need of its own child study team, which includes an LDTC, speech therapist, social work, excuse me, social work, psychologist. So that's why you see the significant increase in that line. Staff development is going down by $126,000. We are not decreasing staff development, we are just funding it through our Title II A funds, which is federal funds that is affording us the opportunity to spend that with them. School administration is decreasing by almost ten percent, or $400,000. That's really an offset to a few lines below for our supervisors that that kind of offsets each other because last year, the district realigned their administrators, and that was significant savings to the district and better accounted for is what their job descriptions actually are. Let's see, going down. Security, and the security went up about $250,000. What's in this budget is, when I met with the principals, there was a real need to have an additional security guard in each of the elementary schools, to have a presence when the students are outside for recess and other activities, and to be sure that when the security officer is outside, there's somebody inside the building to assist. So we have a security officer built in each of the elementary schools, a class-three officer budgeted in the middle school, and another security officer in the high school. Can you move down, please? So that takes our total general current expense, which is increasing by 4.3 percent. Moving down to the equipment. So we have a technology plan that was developed by our technology department, and it ranges from 2023 to 2026. And in the current year budget, the funds that should have been allocated for technology were, some of them were cut. So with, in this school year, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we have, we're sort of making up for what was missed in the current year. And these large numbers that you see, they are Promethean boards, interactive boards, end-of-life. Our technology staff has worked tirelessly in trying to repair what we have in district, ordering parts, and they are just at the end of their useful life. So they need to be replaced because, as you know, most of our students learn through technology, and they need this to be successful. Okay, let's move down a little bit more. Administrative technology, down by thirty-five percent. Some of these, like within the equipment line, some of these are like one-time purchases. That's why you'll see such drastic swings. You know, you'll need it in the current year, but you're not going to need it next year because we bought it this year. So the items that you see in the twenty-four, twenty-five column will not be in the twenty-five, twenty-six column. In, in the required maintenance budget line, we have, we have several parts that we purchase. What makes it equipment is that the individual item is over $2,000. So we have in this budget, we have to have in our inventory parts to repair all of our HVAC and plumbing equipment. We try to do most of the work in-house and not have to spend money on contractors because that costs more money. Custodial services, we're in need of a new maintenance vehicle, and purchasing additional items to increase the value of our current trucks. We do have a list of all the vehicles in the district and their mileage and how they're managed. When, when the, when the district repairs their vehicles, the office staff manages them by the truck number so that the director can manage when a vehicle is nearing its end of life. Upkeep of grounds, going down by 26,000, but it's still a sizable amount. We have lawn equipment that's in there that we need to purchase because we do our own grounds work here. And, and I think that's about it. So equipment is going up about twenty percent. But again, these are, most of these are one-time purchases. So now for our capital, capital projects, we have, at our next meeting in March, we're going to be doing a presentation. The district has been working with our architect and developing a ten-year plan. With the failed referendum, we had to try our best to figure out how we can get some of these projects into our budget on a needed basis. Obviously, we don't want to lose the state aid on eligible projects, but we really don't have a choice on some of these failing systems in the district. So what we have in next year's budget, we have the CMS roof replacement, which is almost $4 million. We have a parking lot expansion at Mountain View, and we have a partial roof replacement here at the middle school. And all of those items, part of them, they were in the referendum, we're pulling them out because we have to get them done now. And total general fund going up eight and a half percent. So how much is this going to cost? So, oh, this is debt service. Yeah, sorry. I'm ahead of myself. I can't even really see that anymore. Debt service, we're nearing the end of our, the referendum that was passed years ago. Revenues have to equal expenditures. So the revenues coming in are, is the tax levy from the taxpayers, and then the two pieces are interest on the bonds and the redemption of principal. That went down almost $7,000 because as you near the end of your debt, you start paying more toward principal and less toward interest.
So what's going to be put into the new budget? As point out, mind is showing the fact that our focus really is to ensure none of our elementary classes go over twenty students. My eighteen months here, one of the common conversations I have with parents over and over again, and also staff, is the importance of that twenty student number. And certainly, our goal is to ensure that all those classrooms won't have more than twenty students. We're also creating, as Michony pointed out, a preschool-only child study team. Currently, we pull our child study team from other buildings because those students eventually go to other buildings when they get into kindergarten, first grade. We felt it was more efficient and prudent for them to work exclusively at the preschool so that we don't, we can maximize their time with the students and not being pulled from different buildings. And we're also looking to bring most of our therapists in-house. You know, this is an initiative that we started last year. One of the key things is that we currently have some vendors or outside contractors who serve with therapists, whether it be OT, PT, and we want to make sure that those are our employees so they get to know our students. And we started that last year, and we want to continue that trend for this upcoming school year. We're also looking to be adding additional interventionists as well as academic coaches to support both our students and staff. Adding additional mental health personnel, such as additional SAC at the high school, additional security guards at each of our buildings. As Michony pointed out, we are looking to hire one additional security guard at each elementary school. Right now, because of the way of our outside activities, whether it be Z and/or recess that requires your security guards to go outside and does not allow one to remain in, this allows us to be able to maximize that and also to also have someone stay after school during activities. So that'd be great for, for the elementary schools. We're also looking to add a class-three officer at the middle school. This is something that we had great conversations with our local PD in order to join that relationship. We have a fantastic class-three officer, Officer Abir, at the high school. We want to add someone else to the middle school. We're also looking to add a multilingual teacher at the middle school. As we pointed out, our multilingual population is increasing, and we want to make sure that those needs are being met. Along with that, we are looking to add a supervisor, K-12, a multilingual interventions across the board to ensure that those families have a point of contact, and also our multilingual teachers, formerly known as ESL, are able to work with what individual, and also often some of these students need interventions, and we want to make sure that is streamlined across the K-12 spectrum.
I just wanted to, I realized I skipped a few things. Could you just go up for a little bit? So on the, stop. So where it says equipment grades one through five, so you'll see there are some significant increases there. I did not talk about them. In those lines, I talked briefly about the technology and the Promethean boards, the interactive boards. But at, at the, at the high school level, there are significant improvements in there. We have new classes that the board adopted this past year, an automotive class. There's funds in there to get that class up and running, such as engines and other things that you need to learn all about it. Also, we have a very extensive robotics team that competes locally, over the state and even nationally, and they needed significant equipment to help them be even more competitive than they already are. And yes, that was it. So the important initiatives in this budget, I talked about the technology plan, and included in this budget is the replacement of end-of-life Chromebooks, laptops, desktops, the purchase of Promethean interactive boards. It also provides proper maintenance, repair, and support of our devices. You know, we invest all these funds, millions of dollars, and we need to make sure our assets are properly safeguarded and provides for safe, secure, and equitable access to all of our, for our learning tools for staff and students. As I mentioned, capital projects, we have a parking lot expansion at Mountain View, and we have roof replacements at Chester Stevens and Mount Olive Middle School. So how much is this going to cost? Can we make this a little bigger? So... Okay, what, what this slide shows you is moving from left to right. That's the tax levy that was discussed in the revenue slide and the tax levy from the debt service. So about $80 million is the total tax levy. Now, the school district operates on a fiscal year, July to June, and the town operates on a calendar year, so the tax levy gets split just about fifty-fifty. So I wanted to share this slide with you so you understood where the tax levy is coming from because, again, once budget documents from the state are posted on the website, I want everybody to understand or at least have knowledge of where these numbers are coming from. So you take the current tax levy, you have to add the balance of the levy from last year, ties out to the total levy that needs to be raised for calendar year 2024, then half of that gets deferred to next year, and so forth. In the middle of the slide, you take the net valuations. You'll see for twenty-three, twenty-four, it's 3.342 million dollars. And for twenty-four, twenty-five, the net valuations are projected at 3.36, which is an increase of about 21 and a half million dollars. You apply that to the respective tax levy amount, and that's the tax rate on the right side. So to get your, to get the financial impact for you, I separated it by increments of a hundred. Right now, the average home is assessed at 324,900. That's up a little bit from the average impact that was discussed during the referendum meeting. And how the current tax rate is calculated is by taking, for example, the top line, $100,000 multiplied by the tax rate for twenty-three, twenty-four, and that gives you your current school tax rate. For the proposed, for twenty-four, twenty-five, you apply the same tax rate, and you'll get your annual increase. So for the average assessed home, you're looking at an... So for the average assessed home, you're looking at an annual increase of about $225. You can apply that. I moved out as far as $600,000, but keep in mind, this is not fair market value. This is the assessed value of your home and what your school tax is based on. That's it. The board, do you have any questions?
Board members, do you have any questions about the preliminary budget presentation?
Yes, please. I can answer. Most of what I'll do tonight is abstain because I haven't been involved in anything, but if you can, I have not received like the rest of the board, the paper copies of all of that, so it's tough just to look at it up there. If I could have the paper copies, I appreciate it. Two things. On Resolution 10.9 tonight, we're taking $1,200,000 out of Capital Reserve, and we're doing some projects. What's confusing to me, and maybe you're including the Rod Grant here, but it doesn't say, is that you are going to do $100,000 for the pavement and $655,000 for the middle school, the Mount Olive Middle School. And then on the next page, it says that you're going to do another $3.9 million, which total, you know, $4.6 million, and we're only taking out 1.2. Can you tell me where the other money's coming from?
Because we don't have to, we don't have to withdraw the account based on the Capital Reserve account, and to your point, the Rod Grant is coming out of this year's money. And we will, the district will also be making a motion in June to transfer $2 million back to the Capital Reserve account.
You think it might be wise then to put that in that resolution? Because if your people are looking at that, they're going to say, wait a minute, you're spending $4.6, $4.6 million, but you're only withdrawing 1.2. They don't know about the Rod Grant or anything that's coming out.
But that's not part of that calculation. I mean, I can discuss about the balance in the Capital Reserve account. In June, there'll be a resolution that's passed that will talk about that.
All right. The other thing was, it's all well and good, we want to try to keep a class size of 20 kids, and you're going to hire more teachers. You can hire more teachers, but you don't have a classroom to put them in. There is no more room in two of our smaller schools, and you have about one empty classroom in Mountain View, so I'm not sure hiring more teachers is going to reduce the 25 kids that are in a classroom now because you have no classroom to put them in. That's the question that's bothering me, that that's why I'm telling you, you have to go back out in December for the referendum to put that addition on. So you might want to answer that. I have no, no answer for it.
So when we're looking at those divisions of classrooms across the district, we're going to have to kind of squeeze some of our spaces and in some cases, look to alternative settings for some of our students. Because certainly, right now, that's a common concern that we have, the class sizes that we do have, so it's something that we, as a district, are going to have to discuss.
When you say alternative settings, do you mean leasing places?
Leasing or modulars outside.
Or modular. And of course, we already discussed that, and that comes pretty expensive, at about $3 million per. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the board? I do encourage any board members that have not had the opportunity to go and sit with Nicole, though, Ms. Shonin, and walk through more of the presentation on the preliminary budget, please do so. I know majority of us have sat with Ms. Shonin and gone through it so that we're comfortable with it, and, you know, just like Mr. Stralaci has questions, you know, I think all board members, we should be very comfortable with the numbers and understand where we're moving as a district as well.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
The roofs that were mentioned for immediate concerns didn't include Mountain View, so I'm wondering, was the Mountain View parking lot, is that more of an immediate concern than the roof?
Mountain View is going to be done in the current year budget.
Okay, okay.
We're actually...
Don't worry.
I'm sorry, I interrupted. We're actually going to be going out to bid soon for that project.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Going back to the point of Mr. Stralaci, those alternative modules are included in the budget or not at this point?
So we're looking at that right now. We're looking to see where these classrooms are going to be, because they're not necessarily one building. We're looking at probably about one across each elementary school as far as number of classes. We're not talking about dozens of new classrooms. So we're looking at probably about four across the district, so probably one or two, one or so per building. But at this point, that wouldn't require a module, but after next year, it would.
And when you mention modules, that gave me a bad flashback.
Yeah.
Are trailers?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And what is the cost per module approximately?
I'm not prepared. I'm not sure at that point. I'm not prepared for that.
It's extensive.
It is, yeah. So, and they, what, they have an end-of-life year of about 10 years, I think?
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Can we maybe take that conversation on the modulars and bring it to finance about, maybe find out from our architect what the actual cost is? And while we don't know exactly the timeframe of, you know, requiring them, whether it be in this year's budget or next year, at least having an idea of that cost would be, you know, beneficial, I think, to all of us and to the public to understand, you know, one, where will we get that funding from? And two, you know, when we make the decisions to vote down that referendum, well, there are other consequences to that. You know, we have students to house and students to educate in classrooms of some sort, whether it be expanding buildings or, you know, putting up modulars.
I asked the architect at one of the meetings, it was about $1.5 million per school.
Well, on a good note, Ms. Shonin, I'd like to congratulate you in helping me understand the budget more thoroughly this year, and I want to commend you for all the work you have done. You really helped us out a lot, and I think you did a wonderful job putting this budget together. I just need to let you know that.
Thank you.
Ms. Shonin, will you be teaching a class next week? We're down at workshop on this. I have to say, you know, we've actually, I've sat on two presentations, and we've had the opportunity of adding, you know, board members in and out of those, you know, committee meetings in order to understand it more thoroughly, and I want to say thank you so much for deep diving into it in such detail, too. What else? If not, we are beyond three hours, so I know people are getting antsy or need to stretch their legs. But we are going to go into our committee reports now, and we are going to move to 5.2 Personnel Committee.
That's me. The Personnel Committee met on Monday, March 4th. We discussed exit interview discussion. The committee was briefed on the current exit survey and in-person exit interview process. When an employee officially resigns their position in the district, an exit survey is immediately sent to them, and they are invited to an in-person exit interview with the Director of Human Resources. We also discussed the Touch Point Swipe System Pilot Program. This is a scan-in, scan-out employee attendance system that works in conjunction with current employee IDs. The program will be piloted by district office employees this spring to troubleshoot any potential issues prior to district-wide rollout this fall. We also discussed an English Language Arts K-5 Teacher Coach Job Description. The ELA position scheduled for the 2425 school year will mirror the current math coach position and will provide support for language arts instruction across all four elementary schools. And lastly, a human resource update was provided to the committee regarding potential employee non-renewals of both certificated and non-certificated staff members. I think that's all we covered.
I think that's it. I think that's it. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? No? Okay, we'll keep it moving then. On to Committee C and T Report.
Yes, so we also met on Monday, March 4th. We had a discussion of our instructional coach job, the descriptions. We're reevaluating all the descriptions. Mrs. McDermott provided an overview of the instructional coach job for the K through 5 ELA coach, and the purpose of the job is to streamline the expectations of all current and future coaches within the district. She also provided us an in-depth update at the NJSLA data for ELA, math, and science compared to the district factor group, updates highlighted in the performance of the district, and the interventions taken to impact achievement. Dr. Banjia shared the importance of the Board of Education approving a foreign exchange student on an F1 visa to acknowledge the placement protocol within the school. And then we, that's it, actually. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the board? Nope? Okay, we'll keep moving. We're on to Finance and Operations with Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Yes, thank you. Okay. We have spent a lot of time on finance tonight, so we will make this pretty quick. I do want to note, in terms of finance, in our meeting, we met March 4th, Monday. We spent a lot of time, obviously, on the budget, preparing for this evening. One of the things that I think, without beating a very dead horse this evening, that stood out to us on finance is that, I think, for those of us who are newer, when you come to the school board, you picture a school budget being made the same way you would a business budget, right? Based on the numbers. And I think that that is where a lot of us came from, right? This budget should come from numbers. One of the first things they teach you in governance is that you can't base an educational budget on the numbers. You have to base it on the need. And so as we were looking at this, you know, upcoming budget, everything that has been built in it by Ms. Shonin, which again, have to echo, crushed it, an amazing job, line by line in this budget, everything that was included was not based on the number of students enrolling every year. It's not based on an increase of 70 students per year, but rather, it's based on the need and the ever-changing need of our population, which is changing dramatically year over year and increasing. So if you remember anything else, it's not about the number, it's about the need, and I really appreciate the budget for taking that into consideration. No more finance items, just operations. Our team finished up the Rock of Ages set for the upcoming musical. That's going to be awesome. Make sure you go. From a security standpoint, we issued 132 summons for passing a stopped bus. That's just within the last month. That equated to $21,360 collected by the town in fines and fees. And then from the Transportation Department, we have accepted two offers for selling a couple of our old buses that have close to 100,000 miles on them, so we've just accepted those bids, and we'll be making a little bit of money off of that as well. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? No. We will move on to Policy and Committee, and then I see the student liaison on your next.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Menendez, you're on.
The Policy and Governance Committee also met on Monday, March 4th. Our attendees were Dr. Banjia, Ms. Narciss, Ms. Figuera, Ms. Jones, and myself. Within the items that we discussed, it was the conduct of the board meeting, the Bylaw 0164, that's an updated bylaw. The committee considered changes to the Bylaw 0164 to better align with the bylaw to our existing board meeting agenda. Dr. Banjia would like to run the changes by the board attorney before acting on the revised bylaw. Next, we went to the Policy 2340 Field Trips amended policy. The committee reviewed changes to Policy 2340 to distinguish between the school-sponsored trips and the school-affiliated trips. The revised policy is included on the agenda for the first reading tonight. Next, we discussed the Policy Alert 232. The committee reviewed Policy Alert 232, which was issued by our policy consultant, Stroos May Associates, and Dr. Banjia would like to defer the action on this Policy 2423 and 2431.4 until she has the time to review these policies with her administrative team. The remaining revised policies are included in the agenda also for first reading tonight. Next, we had the consideration of former board attorneys' request to resign. The committee discussed the former board attorney's request to resign his termination and allow him to resign. Ms. Figuera expressed her reservations citing legal concerns. Ms. Menendez and Ms. Narciss supported putting the resolution to a full board vote. We are going to have actions items today, 2.01, 2.02, and 2.03, which are prospectively Policy 2340 Field Trips for first reading, Policy Alert 232 for first reading, and amended to this resolution terminating board attorney. Any question?
Any questions from the board? With that, I see our student liaison who's been here.
Ms. Narciss is not here.
Oh, no. Did we have any, any other, any subcommittees or parent-teacher association or liaison report?
Hello, I'm Sharon Inea, and I am a teacher at Tins Road School, and I have the honor of speaking for our PTO president, Nikki Addison, who unfortunately couldn't be here. So Saturday was Applebee's Flapjack fundraiser, March 9th. Over 25 staff members volunteered. It was so much fun. We served over 300 pancake breakfasts, raising a little over $1,200 to fund future PTO events at Tins Road School. From 8:00 AM, when the doors opened, until 10:00 PM, when our final table was seated, the staff greeted families, served drinks and hot plates, bussed tables to get ready for the next family to enjoy the breakfast. Thank you to everyone who came out and spent the morning with us. Special thank you to Mrs. Aquino, who joined us with her family as well. Madame Tins Road's Wax Museum was also this past week. The staff worked hard to bring another amazing year of Read Across America to Tins students and community. The theme for this year was biographies. Each student was given a biography thanks to a grant funded from EMO, a Pride Grant. We had Read Across America Spirit Week, celebrated with master readers, and culminated with the Wax Museum on Thursday, March 8th. About 170 students attended, and many of them dressed up in their wax museum figures. They stood, they came over, people came over and talked to them, and they gave their presentations. It was just, it was wonderful. And there are about almost 500 visitors throughout, throughout the night, throughout the few hours that they were there. Students worked hard, looked great, and were very knowledgeable about their subject matter. We can't wait to see what Mrs. Capone has in store for next year. And she wanted to say, too, the Tins Road staff deserves all the public accolades and the public school, and the public should know how hard the staff works to bring all these opportunities to the Tins Road community. The Tins Road Book Fair has finally wrapped up for the year. Mrs. Tricarico, Mrs. Rosie De Phillips, De Phillips, and Mrs. Bree De Phillips delivered over $5,000 worth of books to classrooms to enhance class libraries. Pizza Kits are this Thursday for March 14th, which is Pi Day. Thank you to Brandas for always supporting the Tins community. Glow Dance is coming up this Friday, March 15th, at 7:00 PM at Mount Olive Middle School. We have over 300 tickets sold for this fun family event, and make sure you see pictures, the kids, the glowing, it's amazing. Picnic on the Playground is coming up Friday, June 7th. We wanted to thank the Jordan Family and DAM Rentals for generously offering to donate a bounce house to Tins and each of the elementary schools for use at one of our events. They're a local family and business, and we so appreciate their offer. We'll have more information coming out soon for our families about this end-of-the-year event. Lastly, we would like to give a thank you to our sponsors, Honest Heating and Cooling, Power Place, and Pinnacle Partners Group for supporting the Tins Road School PTO for the 2324 school year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Do we have any other, any other PTO or subcommittee liaisons in the audience? Nope? Do we have any on the board? Anyone intend to, any? Nope? Okay, so I do. I attended CMS's PTA, SCA meeting on the, it was on Thursday, and let's go, there are pretty, a lot going on there. They did ask, please follow their Twitter account. They did complete their Valentine's Day theme competition for a principal for a day. They just kicked off their great week for Read Across America. They included... They included Spirit Week and an assembly. They had 70 participants in the science fair. They're celebrating the 120th day of school. They reported a half-day on March 28th for spring break. And they just hired a part-time staff member joining the PE team. They welcomed them. They had the Zuforia Super Fun Assembly during February, many animals for the students to observe and interact with. Their Winter Book Fair was a success. Each student was able to receive a book for $12.99 or less. Candy sale, picked up, pickup will be held during the Rock and Roll-a-thon. If that doesn't work, please email the SCA email address, and they will make arrangements. They have a new SCA board member, parent volunteer liaison, and they're looking for additional volunteers, helping to organize volunteers. So, their new volunteer liaison is Caroline Chu. The Rock and Roll-a-thon is on March 13th with a student date of March 20th. It is St. Patrick's themed this year. Please have the students wear green. Each student will be given a necklace. Open for good weather for that. Parents are invited to attend. Siblings and extended family are also welcome, and the event is held outside, weather permitting. The money's raised will go to support Officer Bill and the MLPD. They're participating in the Police Unity Tour. They will start in Florham Park, New Jersey, and ride their bikes down to Washington DC to honor officers who passed away in the line of duty. It originally started with 18 people. It's grown to 2,000 participants this year. So, Officer Bill and the MLPD do so much for our school, so please come out and show your support. Students learn dances during PE class, and they will be putting those together for the Rock and Roll-a-thon as well. The MLPD will also be in attendance. Donations can be sent via Venmo. They have their Venmo listed. Cash or check are accepted. Two top classes who raise the most money will receive a snack reward, and three surprise guests will be there to dance with the students. Their next meeting is on April 16th, in person, at 9:15 in the cafeteria. There will also be a Zoom option for those who cannot attend. They will also be having a cultural night on April 25th. They will send out more information. They're looking for a fun student night to learn about one another's cultural backgrounds. The yearbook sales are taking place online. No payment will be accepted in, at the school, and it is $20. Fifth-grade families, baby pictures, and messages this year will be free. Their Spring Book Fair will be the third book fair of the year, and it'll be April 26th. This one will be the BOGO Book Fair. A big surprise at the end of their year that they announced will be a CMS Carnival, June 3rd at CMS, with a rain date of June 4th. They'll have two trailers with six games for students to play, and there will also be a Dunk Tank. They will have four bounce houses, ice cream. And in the Dunk Tank will be Ms. Masulo, Officer Bill, Mrs. Mitraski. All students will participate, and each will get a prize and ice cream. Parents will be able to attend only if they are volunteering. Sign-up Genius will be sent out. That is all they have. Anything else?
I was asked to share information from the Flanders PTA at Mountain View. They wanted me to share some of their happenings. They hosted a boys' and girls' dances. They were both held here at the middle school. I had the pleasure of attending the boys' dance on Friday night. It was very busy. I believe a good time was had by all. They did a very good job planning and orchestrating the dance. They hosted a movie night in February, and they're hosting a second movie night again this month, March 22nd. They'll be providing refreshments for Mountain View families. The Mountain View Family Steam Night is on March 14th. There was a fifth-grade Krispy Kreme fundraiser, and 186 dozen doughnuts were sold to support the fifth-grade class. The second session of After the Bell is in session, an after-school enrichment program open to all students. On April 12th, they are sponsoring a school-wide assembly. The pushcart players will be presenting Peter and the Wolf. April 27th, they are holding a clothing drive. Save the date of May 4th for Family Fun Day. That's sure to please a whole school-wide event. They are seeking volunteers to help run the event. They are in the planning stages for Teacher and Nurse Appreciation Week, May 6th to May 10th. And the May Scholastic Book Fair is upcoming. They're working on, in addition, they're working on applications for teacher grants and Mountain View Senior Scholarship for a value of $500.
Any comments from the board or questions? Nope. All right, we will move on. Board presence report. I have nothing to report. And we will move on to approval of the monthly expenditures and reports. Can we have a motion to move items 6.1 through 6.4, Mr. Rizzolo?
I make a motion to approve...
Ms., Madam President, we moved up the public comments first.
Oh, you want public comments?
Public comments.
Okay. So, we are going to open up to public comments on action items, action items only. Members of the community may comment on any action item prior to board discussion. Please state your name, address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated.
So, just so we're clear, when we're talking about the budget and you're looking at last year's budget, you had $8.8 million. That was unallocated. So, for people that were worried about that there wasn't money to do things, that was $8.8 million that you could do things. And it sounds like, in the budget this year, you didn't allocate for the roof, but you have enough money to do the roof. Because not only do you have $8.8 from the year before, but you raised taxes 4.3 and had the additional 5. Okay, so you have that much more money over last year's budget. So, instead of having excess surplus, you could have done the roof on CMS, right? We can all agree that that could have been done last year, but nobody's providing leadership in your administration to make those determinations. So, I want to commend the BA as far as your presentation, because it really highlights the things that aren't being done and the lack of leadership. So, if we're looking at, again, this year's budget, you're looking at, you're getting $5 million more. Now, again, that, that ends, right? This is the last year that you're going to have that. Okay, so, the community, I guess, can assume that either we're going to be more efficient moving forward, or we're going to see huge tax increases to cover the excessive spending that exists. Okay, it's going to have to be one or the other. Now, I have a question. I know this is public comment, but if we have such an increase in needy special ed students, why is our extraordinary aid flat?
The reason why the aid is flat is because it's not certain that the aid is going to exist next year. It's based on available funding from the state.
Okay, which means that that's not the actual number. Okay? That's, let's, let's make that clear. That's not the actual number. That's the budgeted number. Okay?
Right, because the applications are due in May, and the aid comes out in August.
Okay. So, this is, again, a circumstance that there is, again, we can pretty much assume it's going to be more money than what's being budgeted, okay? And this is where these huge amounts at the end of the year come in. Again, $8.8 million, okay, is what existed. $4 million plus was not spent and could not be rolled over, right?
It was rolled over into next year's budget. It's taxpayers' relief, so the money didn't, excuse me, the money didn't go anywhere. It's going right back to support the budget, which is going to support this roof project.
But not utilized, right? You could have done this last year. All of this urgency and all of these conversations about the referendum from our very experienced board members, okay, and educators, right? We had three educators that were sitting on...
Please address your, your questions to the board.
There were prior administrators here last year who were in charge of that, so they're not here to defend themselves.
Well, the person in charge is still sitting here, okay? Or supposed, this is supposed to be...
Can we please keep our comments respectful?
The next one is, is that we just got a presentation about the evaluation of the superintendent. Okay? Now, I came to the last board meeting talking about the fact that state laws are not being followed.
Mr. Capone, is this about action items, sir?
Well, yeah, it's, it's about the HIB. Okay, you're acknowledging a HIB tonight, okay? And that's significant in the fact that there's policies that you're supposed to follow, that they're supposed to. Your administrators are supposed to respond within 48 hours. And I've sent to the board a number of instances, and that doesn't happen. And HIBs are supposed to begin within 24 hours, according to state law. Okay? Now, not only did you tell me at the last meeting that all laws are being followed, but then you, you know, shadow-wrote that message from Ms. Bellows, okay, stating the same thing. The district is following all of the laws, even though it is well-documented, and I've sent it to all of you board members that it's not. In addition to that, I sent to you, again, another failure of policy. You passed the new HIB policy in May, right? But it wasn't available to the public until after February 21st, when I brought it to your attention, okay, which is the responsibility, again, of your superintendent. The HIB that I'm here to discuss, again, one of my complaints and one of the things that I already shared with the board, and now I guess we're going to share it publicly, is the fact that I reported a HIB. Instead of investigating the HIB and opening a HIB, Mr. Grillo instead talked to all of the staff members.
At this point, we don't talk about personnel in the public meeting.
You can, I can.
No.
Yes.
The board does not entertain conversations regarding personnel during a public board meeting. Also like to direct you to, to wrap up your comments when you get a chance here.
There is no time limit, okay? And me speaking about the fact that there was an investigation that didn't take place, that instead, he went and talked with a number of different people, okay, four days before opening the HIB. But the HIB law is 24 hours. Okay, now, I have requested, this is now the third time, for an investigation about the lack of following the state law and policy of Summit, of Ms. Bellows, and Mr. Grillo. And to date, the board has done nothing. This is now the third time, okay? Which, again, means that either you're not going to take this seriously and you're not going to do anything until I take further steps, okay? Or at some point, you're going to hold people accountable for not doing their jobs and not protecting students.
Do we have any other comments from the public on action items and action items only? Please be reminded that abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated.
Martin Wells, 25 Woodcrest Avenue, Bud Lake, New Jersey. What I want to find out is that with the Policy Committee redoing the policies, I'm really glad that we're continuing doing that for years. It was neglected. In the past two years, you've done more policy changes than in probably the past 10. I want most of the board members to know that Strauss Esme has made some errors in the past with some of their things that they say were state law, which really were advisories, which some people may be familiar with. So, I would encourage the Policy Committee and them, not only do Strauss Esme, but also look at some other vendors for choice, which could benefit the district as a whole. And do we know how many total policies we have in place in the district?
They're up on the website, but I don't have the number.
Is it over 10,000, 5,000? Because the reason why I'm saying that, like, you guys are doing a great job now doing the reviewing of policies, but there's so many of them. I don't know if there could be something else that could be done to fast-track them, because some of the policies were done and improved back in the '70s, some in the '80s. I've actually looked at a lot of them, and they, they definitely need to be refreshed. Okay? The other thing I also want to say is that, in the budget today, there's a transfer, which I've never seen something like this before, where we're actually doing a transfer for sports, and it says, "Transfer to athletic account." Is that a bill or is that not a bill?
What is it?
It's Mount Albemine Athletics Account to 2,300.
Is it a transfer?
Yeah. I've never seen a transfer put on the bill list before.
Oh, I don't have a copy of the bills list.
All right, well, maybe if you...
Do you have, do you have it with you?
That's the account for the, the athletic account.
Oh.
Has a separate account where they pay the officials out of and the game workers out of. They have a separate account.
Oh, so, so basically what you're doing, you're just transferring it as a bill payment into that. All right, because I've never seen that.
You have to charge the budget, and then the cash is moved, because it's managed through Quicken. That's one.
All right. The other thing I want to talk about, about the budget. Last year, when they had the budget, last year, I spoke about the budget, and I said, "Well, we just got $8.9 million," and it was gone in 30 seconds. I like the way you're running the district. Your presentation is phenomenal. But some of my concerns are, which I mentioned last year, is that the money's eventually going to run out from the state, and now we're at that bar. We're getting the last true-up. Going forward, you know, a budget two years ago was 107 million. Now, we're at 127-plus million. What are we going to do years going forward? We're going to be in a situation where we're going to have to be cutting service down the road, because tax levies, you're limited by the state, and I see a lot more hurdles coming down the road.
So, in, in this budget, there are a lot of one-time expenditures that should have been divided over the past several years, namely, the technology plan that I was talking about. So, in, in the proposed budget for next year, there are a lot of large, one-ticket item numbers.
So, they won't be there, regarding...
They won't be there next year. Also, some of these items, in the past, the district has financed them through the ESC because they just couldn't get it all into the budget. I chose with the committees, we talked about this for a while, you could finance it, or if we have cash to pay, let's pay with the cash now, and why increase the debt for the future? So, that's what, you know, that's what we were talking about in committees. It's great, we can do this now. How do we sustain it? But some, the, the majority of the big-ticket items are one-shot infusions, and then, as we manage with the technology plans and the other plans, there'll be small pockets of infusion in subsequent years' budgets.
All right, and the other thing I want to talk about is, you put in the budget that you were going to have around $400,000 attributed to interest earned on the capital which is held at financial institutions?
Yes.
Okay. Now, last year, I mentioned to the previous minister about making sure that you're diversified in your financial institutions, enrolling into treasuries, which is secure with some of the bank failures that have occurred around the country. Hopefully, that we're using larger institutions and that you're able to start doing treasury rolls, where you can get 5% on your money, and so you're maximizing the return on the taxpayers by getting higher yields. Do you know what the average yield you're getting on the funds from the financial institutions that you're utilizing?
I do not know that right now, but I can...
Yeah. I would encourage the Finance Committee and you'd work together to monitor that, because I roll 24 paper, one-week paper, getting 5% plus through the treasury program, and that could really enhance. Instead of being 400,000, it could be 800,000. But if you don't have a group that does that, you're, it's a missed opportunity of extra funding.
Well, but also, we're not going to have large sums of money sitting there, because we should be spending the budget.
I know, but the township gives you like 26 or 30 million dollars at a clip. Is that correct when they do the taxes? Because it's quarterly?
It's not.
They, they give us about, I'm going to say like 5.6 million a month.
Oh, so they give it to you on a monthly basis, not on a quarterly basis? Okay, that, that changes my assumption then.
Right.
And I guess, finally, I also want to talk about, we talked about some of the technology and the stuff, the products that we sell. We sold all those laptops last year to a company for $5 each, which had to be work-in-order, which I was offering to buy them all to give them to the people in the community. And we're selling these two buses. I saw them in the, in the proposal. The money from those buses, is that going into the general fund, or is that going to go stay in the busing department to stay for maintenance and support of the existing equipment?
It's, it's going to be used to maybe pay off a lease payment for the buses. This past summer, the district purchased, I think, five buses.
Okay.
And they, that was financed over, I think it's a five-year lease. So, we're looking to either put that toward another 54 or 39-passenger bus, or pay off an existing lease payment to offset that.
In the past, they've moved that money to the general fund versus keeping the equipment in the, keeping the money coming back from the sales of equipment in the equipment fund.
Well, you have to record the revenue in the proper account if, if it's the board's purview to put it toward a specific purpose. Usually, to memorialize that, we would make a motion to say, we, you know, we have this money, and we're going to use it toward this purpose.
And finally, I just want to talk, make one comment based on something Ms. Melendez said about our attorney asking to resign. I want the board here to remember all the emails I've sent the board on the attorney's unethical behavior, and do not allow that man to resign from position based on the emails that every board member here has received with the proof and evidence of his unethical... with the proof and evidence of his unethical behavior.
I'm sorry, is that on action items?
It was mentioned in her meeting. She mentioned it, that I can't believe he had the audacity to ask. It's a shame on him. But I encourage the board to hold true to your ethics and don't let that man who's been unethical get away with his poor ethics. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public on action items? Seeing that, let's move on back up to the approval of monthly expenditures and reports of 6.1 through 6.4. Mr. Orzillo, you're back on.
I make a motion to approve monthly expenditures 6.1 to 6.4.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Stolachi?
I can vote yes on it.
And Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And, let's see, Ms. Aquino on personnel action items, 8.1 through 8.22.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to move personnel action items 8.1 through 8.22.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Both of us. Either one, we both did.
And roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Stolachi?
I'd like to thank Mrs. Longo for the 22 years of service she gave us. And yes, on everything?
And Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And curriculum and technology action items, 9.1 through 9.4. Ms. Fenton?
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve curriculum and technology, 9.1 to 9.4.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Stolachi?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And can we have Ms. Fitzgerald, finance and operations, 10.1 through 10.13?
On the recommendation of the superintendent, I'd like to make a motion to approve action items 10.1 through 10.13. Second.
And roll call, please.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neill? Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Stolachi?
Well, I haven't been in on the finance report, so I'm going to abstain on everything except 10.7. On 10.7, because I've looked at a lot of budgets and I know the amount of work that went into that and the fantastic presentation tonight, and it's a first reading, and I have a chance to vote on it again. So tonight I'm going to vote yes on 10.7 and ask you, when you have a chance, to look at my checkbook.
And you're abstaining on everything else, Mr. Stolachi? For the record, you're abstaining on everything else except 7.
Yes, just that.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
And Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. And can we have administrative action items, 11.1 through 11.13? Can we have Mrs. Figuera? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Melendez.
Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, I present the motion to approve administrative action items, 11.1 through 11.13.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Mrs. Melendez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neill? Mr. Orzillo?
Yes.
Mr. Stolachi?
Abstaining on 11, 1, and 2, yes, on everything else?
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Figuera?
Yes.
Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes. Do we usually have old business and new business before public comment?
I thought we moved that a while ago. I don't know.
I know, actually, I'm going to put those ahead so that should there be anything, the public can comment on it. Is there any old business, 13.1? No. Any new business?
Let's look around, everyone, that we have our district on elementary science fair this Saturday at the high school, so please come out and support. Our close to 170 students all in a range from K to 5. So we're excited to see them participate and show their passion for the sciences.
Excuse me, what time does that start?
I believe, 9 o'clock. I should know I'm speaking, so, yeah, 9 o'clock.
Anyone else with new business? The only new business I'd like to add is I'd like to, as the president, for Mr. Stolachi back on the finance and operations committee, and I'd like to also place you back as the Mountain View liaison.
Sure.
And welcome back. Public comments now, we will move to public comments. Students, parents, employees, and community members may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. Please state your name and address for the record. All comments must be respectfully presented. Abusive or obscene comments will not be tolerated. Oh, now it's- Now you're up.
Good evening, my name is Gabrielle Juggs and I live at 5 Indian Spring Road. I stand in front of you tonight, not as the Board of Education liaison, but as a student who is a part of the Mount Olive School District. The reason I'm up here tonight is probably similar to most of the people in this room. I sat through the last board meeting after presenting all the amazing things that were going on at the high school. Then we heard from the parents' club at the elementary school that blew me away, with all the hard work the parents are putting into supporting the students. After that, it was open to public comment. And to be honest, it was really hard to watch as the community sounded so upset. Instead of walking away from the meeting happy to see the people in my community and from hearing all the outstanding parts of this community, I walked away feeling like the board and our community were divided. I love being a part of this school district and I am proud to represent this town, no matter if that means in the classroom, on the field, or in the Air Force Junior ROTC program, which just a few weeks ago, we presented our goals to you right here. So with all that I've learned from this extraordinary program that I have been afforded because of this district, I've learned that for success to happen, it takes a team that works together and that doesn't mean a team that has to always have the same ideas or opinions, but their end goal has to be the same for success to occur. I believe that everyone in this room tonight, no matter if you sit behind a table or sit in a chair in the audience, is a part of this community. And I believe no matter the stance, each of you share the same end goal of doing what is best for the children and this community. So I may be leaving in a few months, I stand in front of you tonight for my younger sister and for every student marauder. I will always be proud to be a marauder. I just hope that this team of community members can learn to solve problems together because in the end, we all have the same end goal for success. And always remember that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Gallagher, 135 Pershaw Drive. I want to say first, at the last speaker there, I think I'm going to have her write my stuff from now on because that's the message, right? That's what we all want. I think she spoke for everybody on top of what we all said tonight. To the board again, thank you for allowing some of us to come out and speak and Mr. Stolachi, glad to see you back on the board there doing what you do. I want to actually just make a quick comment about something that's been bothering me ever since I've come to board meetings and started speaking at them, noticeably with other people speaking here. I'm pretty sure it's Dr. Banjia. It's not Summit Banjia. You know, I've heard a lot of times, you know, it just happened before and the gentleman referred to her by her first name, but then said Mrs. Bellows. So I'm not assured what kind of, you know, ego is running around town where people can't address her the way that, the title that she's due, that she worked for. She is the leader of our schools. So, you know, from now on, when people come up here, I try to, I know I get very heated too. I try to always address the board properly. I've spoken about previous administrators and given their due diligence. And Dr. Banjia is currently the leader of our district as an educator and she's earned every title that I think we should be respecting her with when we talk to her. Thank you.
Tim Capone, Highfield Road. Actually, I want to address this to Mr. Geppert because again, at the last meeting, you made it a point to say that all of the rules have been followed. So on October 23rd, which again, you have these emails, a HIB was filed. But yet, on October 27th, having not opened the HIB, I have a message from Jacqueline Bellows, Friday, October 27th, which again is not 24 hours later, that says, "After further consultation with our legal team, we have opened a HIB investigation." Again, is that 24 hours, okay? The rules are not followed, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing. And again, this board is supposed to be holding your administrators accountable. That is what your responsibilities are.
My name is Christopher Zire and I live at 29 Saunders Lane. I have an anonymous letter that was given to me in my mailbox. I never put credit into anonymous letters, I don't know if the new board does. I'm just kidding, that never happens. Okay, please bear with me as I begin to say everything I needed to say at the last meeting. I have written notes this time as last time when speaking from the HIB, I became visually upset. I know, Ms. Figuera, you referred to me as a broken man when speaking to other people. I appreciate your evaluation based on one minute of my life, but I assure you I am not broken. Truth be told, I was a broken man, but it was when I served on the board for three years, when I allowed myself to be bullied, to be lied to, and let so many things slide by unprosecuted. My silence was intended to help the community heal, the district to move forward, and even part to show a unified board, something the executive of the current board preaches, but obviously with actions of late, does not practice. Mrs. Narcisse stated that all board members but one were made aware of Mr. Orzillo's intention. I truly don't believe that. Mr. Stolachi's daughter is a great actress, but I don't believe he is. Even if that is the truth, a closed session should have been called to ensure the one board member had that information. At least when the resolution was read, it should have been tabled. I truly believe these four board members were blindsided and that Mr. Stolachi was persecuted for his excited utterance. But it's good to see you back on the board. I'm glad you all made the right decision. The removal of the law firm during a time when abundance of lawsuits are being filed against board members in the district, a lawyer with a true understanding of the district and its actions is imperative. In conjunction, the three new board members should have been given the opportunity to hear from senior members about Schenken Price. They would have been able to evaluate things such as their winning record and their billable fee compared to the new law firm. In addition, they should have been given the opportunity to hear the reasons why legal fees have increased. Things like additional charges to address what is over $100,000 in savings for residency issues, the review of the student handbook, the many Oprah requests that need to be reviewed to ensure no sense that the information is released, and fighting the many lawsuits recently filed against the district that I believe is an attempt to smear the district, various employees of the district, and are to be used as a legal tactic. But I'm not here to discuss poor leadership, bad practices, and legal actions. I was going to remain quiet. I was going to sit back and remove myself from the soap opera that is the Mount Olive School Board. However, Mr. Scheckner decided to attack me personally on Facebook by stating I wasted taxpayer money and legal fees. Well, you can say that was the proverbial straw that broke the camel's back and I just am so tired of the hypocrisy. I appreciate Mr. Scheckner's concerns about the district spending on legal fees, but I find it peculiar. Mr. Scheckner at one time filed ethics charges against three board members. These were posted to social media unlike other ethics charges where the complainant didn't stoop to those types of tactics. We had to hire attorneys because a former board member was filing against a current board member. When Mr. Scheckner received my attorney's response and how he has used information that he was not privy to, information that was discussed in closed session, wonder how he got that, and his claims were not arguable, he just said, "Ah, forget it." Now, my legal fees were approximately $3,300. Multiply that by three and you have a number close to $10,000, totally and utterly wasted. Now, I know for some that is a drop in the bucket in the school budget, well over 100 million. But to me, this is a classroom of Chromebooks, various field trips, math textbooks. So if Mr. Scheckner is willing to pay that money back to the district, I will listen to what he has to say about legal fees. He is not, of course, not the only one screaming about legal fees. Mrs. Narcisse and Mrs. Fenton have brought attention to legal fees. However, they were willing to file pro se petitions where both individuals were willing to make false statements under verification of oath. Mrs. Narcisse said a board member acted unilaterally, but the voting record contradicts that. Mrs. Fenton stated that I said earlier this morning I filed ethics charges against Dr. Zawicki to purposely invoke the doctrine of necessity. I never said that and I wish I could state what I really said because it was very contradictory to that statement. You can ask anyone in that meeting if I said what Mrs. Fenton accused me of. Of course, they can not tell you the substance of the meeting, but they can clearly tell you I didn't say that. Well, all but maybe one. The truth is Mrs. Fenton insulted all the other people in that meeting.
Yeah, I just want to point out at this point, you need to be careful about confidentiality on board matters that may-
I didn't say, I didn't say anything that happened.
I'm just cautioning you as you move forward.
I'm telling you what didn't happen in the meeting. If any other people in that room had heard me say something that deplorable, they would have also filed suit. Heck, I would have filed suit on myself. The fact of the matter is I never said it, nor did I mention to anyone that day, anyone, the day I filed my charges. There were only three people that knew that day. I filed, myself, Mr. Zinnerman, and the person that received them. It's funny that these allegations never have been opened by the ethics police or used as an example of being blindsided. All members of the boards were blindsided by me doing this. But please understand at that time, this BOE had more leaks than the Titanic. Mr. Wellsbinder posted on Facebook that Mrs. Aquino filed tenure charges blindsiding the board. I can only speculate why he didn't use my ethics charges as an example because that was clearly a blind side. But I guess, I can only speculate he didn't bring it to the forefront because it's a clear example of something the ethics police should look after. Others like the self-declared ethics police spend tens of thousands of dollars suing the district over a cell phone. He continues to file suits against members of the board. If all you want to do, if you all want to lower legal fees, then you and your friends could just stop suing the district. Mrs. Fenton, two meetings ago, you said you felt left out or weren't receiving information from the lawyer and based on those feelings, you voted to remove the law firm. I am shocked you would say something like that because I'm not the only one you perjured yourself on in your pro se motion. Mr. Zinnerman was another victim. In addition, I told Mrs. Fenton and only Mrs. Fenton that Mr. Robinson said something about employee of the school. Imagine my shock when I saw those statements in legal paperwork two days later from that employee. It was big, but not more than the shock I believe Mrs. Fenton felt when I told her I was lying and good luck to get me testified to that statement. I have apologized to Mr. Robinson profusely for utilizing names, but sometimes when you're looking for a mole, you have to use a little smoke to get them out. I'm not saying that Mrs. Fenton was disseminating information from confidential meetings, but this situation strengthened my belief that she was. However, the bigger problem I have is that you are making decisions based on personal feelings, not based on what is good for the district. I wish I had that luxury when I was on the board. If I did, I would have not sat on my hands, administrator after administrator kept speaking at board meetings, asking the board to act. I would have voted to, I would not have voted the affirmative on action items that I knew made the lives of two women I respect greatly even harder than it needed to be. Or I would have voted the affirmative, I would not have voted for the affirmative of safety net under our transportation drivers to ensure students get where they need to go. I know when I made that vote, it would look that it was undermining an important aspect of our district. I know that I am sadly risking my livelihood and my reputation by speaking here today. That is another factor of why I stayed quiet and fortunately, it's something that has been made clear to me numerous times by verbal warnings and actions of others. Because for some strange reason, when people speak out, people on the board and in the community decide that they will discredit those individuals or try to scare them into being silent. They will label people uninformed, crazy, and broken. They will make up lies, stating those who spoke out are talking about their children. They will file false police reports, badger individuals via social media or even at their homes, contact neighbors of individuals to tarnish their reputation,[1786.28] file false ethics charges, passively aggress and threaten individuals with comments like, "You need to remember who you work for." Purge themselves, threaten litigation, heck, file litigation with false claims. And all of that has been splashed across social and news media. For example, some people may have read that I was accused of putting in a reimbursement for a meal someone else paid for. Just for everyone's information, school board members receive a stipend for food, not reimbursement. Any fact checker could have addressed that. I was also accused alongside another innocent individual of using the post as near the district buildings to send my ethics charges. Any fact checker could have reached out to me and I would have provided the receipts from the Hackettstown Post Office. But I believe the intent was to tarnish my name and the other individual. During my tenure on the board, I was told I was going to jail for things that I did. That if I didn't vote a certain way, then litigation would be filed against me. I was asked to read a resolution to remove the lawyer as a sign of good faith. And that is only the tip of the iceberg of things I was asked to do by intermediaries. My favorite of all is that, two hours before a board meeting, a person reached out to my wife because I no longer took their calls. They called her to inform her that if I voted against an employee at that time, I would be served the next day at my job. For some reason, they thought it would be a shock to me. My real problem was not with the message, but their inclusion of my wife and the timing of the message. This individual is very aware that my wife is extremely concerned about my job. She has lost sleep due to seeing retaliatory statements and actions being the norm in the world of education. I did not want to relive being served in front of a people because the first time I was served, it was in my house in front of my daughters. Even though the board has an attorney and could have easily received the papers. The main reason I am here today is to proactively address what I believe is an action item that is coming in the near future. I am worried that this board will look to settle various lawsuits with various plaintiffs. And yes, I use the plural. I want people to know that there is no need for any district money to be spent on these lawsuits. They go through the insurance, and once that $10,000 deductible is met, another use for Mr. Schechner's money, when the district does not need to spend any more money, it's really the insurance companies' call to address these matters and will use their judgment in making settlement offers if necessary. Any money used will be paid by the insurance, just like the other recent lawsuits have been. These recent lawsuits have been used to falsely claim that taxpayer money was being used in an attempt to disgrace the board. I believe that any use of district money to expedite this process could be very well considered a misappropriation of tax funds. Some may state we need to put this behind us and move on. I couldn't agree more, and I do think things should go away. However, recent actions of some, and that be dealt with by the insurance, however, recent actions of some just empower vindictive people. I know vindictive is a big word to be throwing out, but that is my belief. Especially when I was forwarded a text message that was sent to various members of the educational and Mount Olive communities. This text message was sent right after the law firm of Shanken Price was replaced and was filled with statements reveling over the things that happened to previous board members and vendors of the district. I can't find any other adjective, nor can I personally believe any differently. One thing I would like to say is when texts like this go out to people, they should be factual. Many of the false comments in this text message cheater on defamation. Dr. Giordano was not fired, Mr. Sanders was not demoted, Mr. Miller is not under grand jury indictment, and I did not resign. And for the love of God, if you're gonna bash me, at least spell my name right. I would also like to take a moment to apologize to the administrators, teachers, students, and families of the students in Mount Olive District as our district has become the setting for a Shakespearean play. I do know that all things I have said today are contradictory to my desire for the district to move forward and my expressed concern for tarnishing the school district. But they needed to be said. I truly apologize to all of you, and I thank the administrators and teachers of this district for continuing to do what is needed to be done to keep the true focus on the students. Finally, before I slip back into the ether, I have to remind people that the truth is always an acceptable defense to defamation. And hey, somebody once said, "The truth will set you free," and I'll be damned if he wasn't right on that one.
Anthony Giordano, 39, Center Street, Bud Lake. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. It's very difficult, if you're all on speaking your mics, for people to hear everyone out there. That's gonna be a tough act to follow, and I'll try to be short and sweet. We talk about transparency, it's said a lot during the interviews with board members. Transparency that community doesn't think we're transparent. I always felt as a board member for 17 years, it's not that we're not transparent, people just don't always agree with what the board has to do. Right? There's a difference between transparency and what the board has to do. So I'm gonna try to educate some of you, because I know you're a relatively new board, on what that means. Transparency is not what happened two weeks ago. Right? Could have been easily resolved. Transparency would have been us saying as a board, "Let's go to committee, we went RFP, come out, have a discussion in public, we're gonna RFP next month and go through that process." That was not the process that was taken. For the love of God, that resolution was not written that night, and I guarantee the five board members knew that was gonna happen. And if you didn't, you shouldn't be in leadership roles, and I say that politely and respectfully. It was, everyone was blindsided on it, it wasn't happening, okay? My opinion is, there's a larger underlying thing happening to this board. It's being run by a political party, and I will connect the lines for everyone at home in this audience to see it. Last year, you both filed a pro se against the board. There's a clear ethics violation. We as a board didn't invite you into closed session. We had a lively debate about whether we should file ethics against you. I had the docket from the School Ethics Commission in the matter of Lorenzo Richardson, Jersey City Board of Education, Hudson County, where it was confirmed that filing any charge against the board that you sit on is adverse action. Our former counsel was one of the ones that counseled to say, "Hey, let's not do this, we have enough on our plate, myself, Mr. Aquino, Mr. Zire, let's just move forward. We thought the pro se's were BS, they weren't gonna go anywhere," which they did. You had an adverse action against our board attorney. You should have abstained from that vote and went through the committee. That's what I'm talking about, to try to educate people. You could have avoided all this. That's my point. You don't know what you don't know, and you're going full steam ahead, and you're putting yourselves at risk. For two years, I've had my name, my reputation, my career, through emails, through Buddy Lake, through all the Protons, my children brought into it, children that you know. Have been to your house, you've texted, that's okay. Might nod your head yes, because that's okay. If it was your kids, or your family, or your livelihood, I would have been side by side with you tearing down walls, taking people apart. Now, here's the idea, that I'm gonna connect the dots. So during the election, October 29th, I received a text message. I sent it to you, Ms. Fenton, you, Ms. Narciss, and you, Ms. O'Neill. The secret lives of Mount Olive Board Ed candidates, the secret lives of Mount Olive School Board candidates, the secret lives of Mount Olive School candidates, admins were former critic of the old board attorney, not a former critic, the same critic in town, and a sitting board member. And I sent it both to you, I sent it to you, I had the text messages. Right? Both high-powered Republicans in our town. Two weeks ago, Monday night at 6:30 PM, an email went out from the Mount Olive Republican Committee, Social Club, whatever you want to call it. The Sunday before the meeting, after the attorney was RFP'd. Don't forget that Monday, February 26th at 6:30 PM, there's a Board of Education meeting. Our board needs our support, our board, our Republican board. What's that mean to everyone in this community? That's what we talk about transparency. I've been on this board for 17 years, I've sat with a lot of Republicans and Democrats that none of us ever knew. Thank you very much.
Briann Jarvis, 54, Deer Path Drive. I have a lot of questions tonight, I'm gonna read through my questions and comments. I welcome you to answer tonight, but as I know you're not required to, and most likely will not, I will follow up with an email to the entire board and the superintendent as I strongly believe you owe this community answers. I would like to start by asking if all current board members have completed all required ethics trainings and all new board member trainings. What dates were these trainings completed, and are they documented and on file? I am primarily speaking tonight to address your actions at the February 12th board meeting, terminating the contract with the board's law firm, Shank Price Smith &amp; King, and Mrs. Narciss's comments at the February 26th board meeting relating to this action. While many that spoke at the February 26th board meeting stated that they can't speak to whether the decision to terminate the attorney was a good one and spoke specifically in regards to how the termination was handled, the reality is each of those community members that spoke has as much knowledge of the board attorney's capabilities as do at least three of the board members who voted to terminate the contract, including Mr. Orzillo, who brought the resolution to the board a mere 36 days after being sworn in. If your job, your goal, is to make decisions in the best interest of this district as it should be, and as Mrs. Narciss stated at the last meeting, please inform us how you know enough about how previous lawsuits and tort claims were handled by the law firm, how the termination will affect current pending lawsuits, not just from the previous superintendent, but all pending lawsuits, how the termination will affect every board member and employee of the district who's represented by the board attorney, how the termination will affect the departments that work closely with the law firm, such as the Special Education Department, and what will be required in terms of time and costs to bring the new law firm up to date with all relevant information after only 36 days. As you have failed to respond to questions and concerns brought by community members at the last meeting, as you owe this community answers, my questions tonight that I am requesting clear, direct, and documented answers to are as follows. How often do board members meet with the board attorney that a new board member would have valid information to fairly assess a law firm after 36 days? Do you meet weekly, biweekly, monthly, only when at board meetings or in confidential session? Specifically, how often between January 8th and February 12th did each member of this board interact with the board attorney? I'm not asking what they met about, I understand that information is confidential. I'm asking the attendees, the dates, the times, and duration of those meetings. At what point between January 8th and February 12th did each of the five board members that voted to terminate the contract determine that the services were unsatisfactory? Was it before February 9th? If so, why did you not bring your concerns to the attention of the entire board, bring it up in committee meeting, or at the very least, add the resolution to the agenda for the February 12th meeting? Was it February 10th or 11th? Could the agenda not be revised? Did you inquire if it could be revised? Mr. Orzillo, one interaction did you have with the board attorney that you lost all confidence over those two days after the agenda was already posted that caused you to bring the resolution to the board? To clarify, what contractual obligation was not being fulfilled by the law firm that weekend? As I'm sure you wouldn't bring the resolution based on personal feelings or because someone else asked you to, as that would be unethical. Five board members voted to pass the resolution to terminate the contract with the law firm Shank Price Smith &amp; King. Mrs. Narciss stated at the last meeting that members came to her and informed her as board president that it was the intention of some members, they wanted to replace the attorney. Was the resolution discussed at that time, and did you as board president question these members as to what the concerns were with this contracted law firm? As you have told us that conversations, AKA meetings, took place on this issue, as it is very obvious meetings took place on this prior to the resolution, as not one of you showed even a little surprise when Mr. Orzillo read the resolution, as not one of you asked him to repeat or clarify anything, although he was very difficult to understand, my questions are, who was involved in these meetings? Are there meeting agendas, meeting minutes, attendance sheets, any documentation at all? Was the entire board made aware of these meetings, whether in person, via phone call, Zoom, email, or text message were taking place? Because all qualified meetings should be documented and are included in the Sunshine Law. Do you have documentation of all communication that took place regarding the law firm, including dates and times? Do you understand that if the five of you conversed on this topic in any way that is a quorum and because you did not notify the public, it was unethical and a violation of the Sunshine Law, which requires public bodies provide the public with adequate advance notice of all its meetings, the right to attend its meetings, and reasonably comprehensive minutes of all meetings? Did you, Mr. Orzillo, or did any of the other four members that voted to terminate the contract reach out to the law firm of Shank Price Smith &amp; King to express that you were unsatisfied with their services at any time over the 36 days you were on the board? Did you give them an opportunity to correct the problem or replace Mr. Zinnerman with someone internally, as would be standard practice with a contracted vendor? How did you obtain information on the current law firm to select them and list them in your resolution as a replacement law firm? Did you contact Mrs. Narciss to view the proposal? Did you even view the proposal? What information did you use to determine that the law firm of Scarnici-Hollenbach was the best option for our district moving forward? Did you consult the superintendent or any administrators that work closely with the law firm when making this selection? Did you view the RFP submit in October before making this decision, or did someone direct you to this particular law firm? Is there documentation of that request remaining? Was any research done to determine if there were any conflicts of interest in regards to any pending lawsuits prior to signing a contract? When was the contract extended to the current law firm? What date was assigned by both parties? Was it before or after the resolution was passed? And do you have plans to settle pending lawsuits at the taxpayer's expense? To summarize, you say passing the resolution to terminate the law firm mid-contract was an informed decision for the better of our district. I would like you to provide evidence that supports that. Mrs. Narciss made it a point at the February 26th meeting to vocalize she's not carrying water for anyone, and there is no puppet master. However, your actions to date, including your filing of two petitions of appeal with the Commissioner of Education seeking previous superintendent's reinstatement, vocalized support of the previous superintendent throughout his suspension and resignation instead of standing firmly with the district and remaining silent on confidential employee investigations and disciplinary procedures, as you should as a Board of Education member, public attacks against other board members at board meetings, and feigning surprise at the resolution brought on February 12th only to announce at the following meeting you knew there was the intention of some members, they wanted to replace the attorney. Combined with the actions of select board members who supported a resolution either with limited information to support it due to insufficient time to collect such information or who covertly met to intentionally bring the resolution before the board after the agenda was posted and after all public comments, all point to a predetermined agenda that is not focused on what is best for this district and quite frankly, a puppet master. This community is not stupid. We are educated professionals, professionals with leadership roles in organizations who are familiar with best practice, standard operating procedures, employment laws, employee rights. We are professionals who write and enforce policy and procedure daily, who sit on committees and manage contracted employees, personnel, and budgets. We maintain thorough records, meeting minutes, and agendas. Some of us work closely with employment lawyers and are familiar with the process of dealing with disgruntled employees. We know and understand confidentiality and the limits of confidentiality. We clearly understand that this resolution is in no way comparable to the board invoking the doctrine of necessity. It is in no way comparable to the suspension of the previous superintendent. It is in no way similar to certifying tenure charges against a previous superintendent. And the few that continue to vocalize this on social media also appear to be carrying water for someone. This is not no big deal because we replace vendors all the time. Contracts exist for a reason, and why would any reputable vendor want to sign a contract with a district that will terminate a contract without even taking the time to educate themselves or give the vendor an opportunity to address an issue? Yes, there are clauses in contracts, Mrs. Narciss. There are also contractual obligations and professional courtesy. Would you care to inform the public which clause was utilized as cause to terminate the contract because that information was not in the resolution? Was there a buyout clause? What was that cost to the district? I truly hope that you have clear, detailed documentation of cause for termination and that you've not opened this district up to another costly lawsuit. Above all else, we are parents and taxpayers of the vested interest in the actions that you take and the manner in which you take them. Mrs. Narciss's speech implying that "we just don't get it, we don't understand" is unacceptable and quite frankly, insulting. We do understand, and in fact, after these recent events, I'm certain that we understand better than the majority of you do. Please, don't strive to do better the next day, Mrs. Narciss. Do your best every single time, because that is what you were elected to do, and your poor actions and decisions today cannot be forgiven because you strive to do better tomorrow. I will email these questions to the board. Please answer these questions and provide the requested documentation to support your claim that you strive for transparency and to do the best for this district. That you are not taking actions in terminating contracts without considering the long-term effects on the district or following proper channels. Because without documentation that supports otherwise, your actions are those of a board that is untrustworthy, reckless, and definitely not transparent or honest.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. We will review your email when you send it in consult with our attorney. Were there any other comments from the public? All right, I think we all deserve an award for making it through how many hours? All right, with that, I'll take a motion. Oh, let's go on. Let's go on then to any board or administrative comments. Members of the board may comment on any item of interest pertaining to the Mount Olive School District. And we'll start with Mr. Strelachi. We'll just go around the table.
Yes, thank you. I have two messages. To the young lady, Omar Lazan. First of all, I think you're going to be a lawyer.[622.54][622.54][laughter] You came up here very poised and spoke very eloquently. I want to try to ease your mind, okay? I'd like to give you my experience of many, many board meetings. You heard last week, and you heard tonight, people who are dissatisfied, people who are confused, people who are angry. I think it's very healthy. It's very healthy for this district to have people come up and not, I don't take it as negative criticism. I take it as positive information and direction. And I want people to keep coming up here and talking to us, because we're not infallible. We make mistakes. So thank you for standing up and saying what you did. I would also like to give my deepest gratitude to the board for allowing me to regain my seat on the board. For the last couple of weeks, I'll be very honest with you, I had a very deep void, simply because since 1969, when I moved here, as a taxpayer, as a parent with children in the district, and as time on the board, I have always supported our school district. It's top, top, top in my priorities. So I thank you for allowing me to return and serve out my term. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Strelachi. I'm glad that you're back.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for coming.
Go over my closer. Closer to it? All right. Now can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to, again, say that the robotics competition was great, and I loved seeing it at the high school. And to say congratulations to all the wrestlers. Also, Mr. Krefi, Citizen Advisory Academy is a fantastic class. If he runs it again, I recommend signing up for it and choose to include week coming up in a week. Want to remind everyone.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out, everybody who spoke tonight. I have no other comments.
Ms. Mendez.
Just want to congratulate all the school in the Reed Across America. I had the opportunity, and as a lot of us, to go to Sunshine Shore, and I joined them in reading one book, The World According to Humphrey, and it's a really nice book, and enjoying it. So every night I have homework. Also, I went to the CMS Book Fair, a plenty selection over there. I got a couple of books for my grandkids, so that was nice. And the robotic competition, it was fantastic. A lot of energy, and I enjoyed it a lot. And please, support the science fair that is coming up this weekend. It's really important for our kids and for their education. For my fellow boards, listen to the community, because the community is speaking to us. And the actions that we take, and we do, we have to take responsibility after that. So if they're asking for reasons, are not reasons that you are going to look now. Are the reasons that you had at the time that you did such or what decision. Just keep that in mind. Don't dig now looking for reasons. Do the reasons that you had at the time that you took action. That's it.
No comment. Ms. Fenton?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to make a suggestion, because I've heard so much about the advisory committee. I would like it if we could maybe get a larger venue so we could have more people attend. Thank you, James, for doing an outstanding job. I wanted to welcome Tony back. I'm happy to see you sitting there. And I also wanted to thank all the interviewees, and hoping they all come out to the next election, because it was a, I wish we had more seats, that we could have taken more I wanted to thank the presenters, the DEI, the wrestling, the budget. I think we did a lot, and it was very positive. Gabby, I also want to commend you. I do really appreciate your words, and I hope people like you come up more often, because that's what we do need. We do need that. And that's about it. Thank you.
Kind of circle over to Mr. Rizzolo.
I'd like to welcome Tony back and thank Nicole for all her hard work.
And we have Ms. Big Marra. I was going around the dais here.
Just a couple of things. I know a lot of our student body left, but there was a lot to be proud of in this room earlier this evening. I also wanted to thank you for the budget presentation. That was very informative. I wanted to thank the five candidates who applied for the open seat. Thank you for coming out and throwing your hat in the ring. I also wanted to welcome back Mr. Strelachi and let you know that I look forward to learning from your experience, and forward to learning from you for the remainder of your term. And I'm also very excited for the science fair this Saturday. Hope to see a lot of familiar faces there. And I also applied for the Citizens Advisory Committee, but was not accepted, so I share Mrs. Fenton's sentiments, that maybe we could expand that for the future. Thank you.
And I guess I'm up last. Mr. Strelachi, I'm happy to have you back. Now I'll tell my father-in-law, he was asking about you. Mrs. Jarvis, if you could be so kind to email those questions for us, the ones that we are able to in our capacity, we'll consult with our attorney and respond back to you the best we are allowed to. Mr. Sayir, I'm happy to see you back up and enjoy your humor today, and your passion, though, every day. I did really enjoy the five candidates. Please do come out. Please, you know, share your thoughts as well. And I did have one question. Dr. Bangea, the DEI committee, the group, they had a couple of questions at the end for the board. If you could possibly have them share them with us, and then maybe we take them back to committee, or you address them for the group?
Glad you brought that up. They would like to attend our next CNT or Policy Meeting, Committee Meeting, to share their ideas.
Yes.
So that was, I was going to email you tomorrow. And on top of that, I just had a couple of other notes. I wanted to thank the wrestlers. I know they all left. For anyone who does not know, they put so much time, energy, they are very, very focused in order to accomplish everything they've accomplished, but the takeaway is, I think we all, you know, can utilize that. And last but not least, Gabby, you know, I've always been so proud of you, and I'm really proud of you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts. We do, you know, take them into account. We totally, you know, look at everything. I write notes if anybody pays attention. But with that also, I wanted to make sure that the public knows that we've now added to our website an entire section about the board, what the board is able to do. There's a FAQ. There's, you know, a whole section about the capacity of the board members. Our ethics, you know, is up there. Dr. Bangea, did that go out to the entire community, or?
Not yet. We're going to plan on sending it out later this week.
Okay. And in addition, we are looking, I did talk to our NJ SBA rep, Mrs. Charlene Peterson, we will actually be looking to do a board retreat in public in the future, so that the public can, you know, see us do some more team building. And that is all I have. Anyone else? No? I'll take a motion then to go into confidential session. Do I have a motion?
The same action may be.
Okay. Motion to resolve that the board meet in confidential session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, personnel, matters of attorney-client privilege, pending or anticipated litigation, confidential pupil matters, real estate matters. Be it further resolved, that the matters discussed in confidential session be disclosed to the public. When the reason for confidentiality no longer exists, action may be taken. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Here in confidential session.
All right.
Okay, yeah, no. I'll call the meeting back into session. Roll call please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Here.
Mrs. Figuera?
Here.
Mrs. Melendez?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Orzillo?
Here.
Mr. Strelachi?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Well, I hate to do another surprise item. We do have a one agenda item for vote. It's 11.14, amendment to the resolution terminating the board attorney. It is going under action items and the resolution reads, amend action item 14.2, which was approved at the February 12, 2024 board meeting, to one, rescind paragraphs one and two terminating the legal firm of Shank Price Smith &amp; King and to accept Shank Price Smith &amp; King's resignation effective February 12, 2024. Do I have a motion?